I'd like to call this meeting of the City of Urbana Council Committee of the Hall to order, Monday, June 8th, 2009. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersatz?
Present.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I know we have a couple of items the staff report, Gail.
I know most of you have probably seen this in the paper or heard about it, but I'm going to remind everybody here that we have two public open houses this week for our major road projects. Tomorrow night, on the 9th, we're going to have the open house for Windsor Road project. It's going to be at the Calvary Baptist Church at 2106 East Windsor Road, and that's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00. And on Thursday night, we will have a public open house for the Goodwin Avenue project. That's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Cranert Center in the Cranert Room. So if you'd like to come out and join us and see a bit here about the projects, feel free to try.
Libby?
And I have some announcements this weekend, Saturday, June 13th, at 303 West High Street. The Urbana Historic Preservation Commission will be hosting a house unveiling workshop, and this would be in the tradition of a barn raising with volunteers removing the nonoriginal siding from a circa 1902 Queen Anne House. This is from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and please contact Rebecca Byrd at 384-2440 to volunteer for the house unveiling workshop. Also, this Saturday is the second Saturday in downtown Urbana, and this is in downtown Urbana, Lincoln Square Village, Main Street, Broadway, and Race. This is brought to you by the Urbana Business Association and will involve antiques, collectibles, art, and more. I think Diane had an announcement.
I'd like to let people know that tomorrow night, Tuesday, June 9th, at 7:00 p.m. is the annual meeting of the Southeast Urbana Neighborhood Association, or SUNA, and representatives from the City of Urbana Public Works, Community Development, Public Safety, Office of the Mayor, and City Council will be there, as well as it's an opportunity for organization and planning, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? And then I'd like to simply announce that Regional Planning Commission of Champaign County has released an updated version to its guide, the Greenways and Trails map for Champaign County. You can find these at the city booth at the farmer's market, and I believe they're showing up at the libraries and other public places. With that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, May 25th, 2009. Do I hear motion?
It's been moved by Dan Marlin, seconded by Robert Lewis.
Brandon?
The only correction is that they're the minutes of the May 26 meeting, which they say, but I think our agenda was off a day.
Right, yes, we met on the 26th, that's correct, which is what the minutes do say. Okay. Anything else? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Our public input is all indicated at time of discussion of the items. First up is Big Broadband Project Peter Resnick with the CU Cable and Telecommunications Commission.
Supposedly I have a presentation. Good evening. Let's see if this actually works. Magic. So, I'm Pete Resnick. I am Chair of the Broadband Access Committee of the CU Cable and Telecommunications Commission. I think my time is probably now up, having said that. Let me give you a little background of what's going on with Big Broadband. You've heard some of this. Mike Smeltzer gave a presentation some time ago. I wanted to catch you up on what's going on and what we're doing going forward. The Broadband Access Committee formed in January of '08, and our mission was supposedly to review current governmental networking through both cities, to investigate community broadband access and what folks have been doing, and our pie-in-the-sky notion was that maybe we could have some sort of municipally-owned fiber optics network throughout the city. Wouldn't that be wonderful? And we would come up with some proposal to give back to the Cable Commission, to bring to the mayor, to bring to you folks. And then something strange happened at the beginning of this year. The stimulus package happened, and the stimulus package includes $4.7 billion for broadband access, and that money is to be used for unserved, underserved, rural, or, and this is the one we care about, vulnerable populations. Unserved and underserved actually have technical meanings, but vulnerable populations, we're talking about lower-income folks, low-to-moderate-income folks. The bids for these grants start in July, we're guessing, somewhere between July and September. We don't know yet because they haven't come out with the rules. So, we as Broadband Access Committee suddenly were moving rather quickly. To tell you a little bit about this, what the stimulus package, officially the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, what the stimulus package gives is 80 percent match for these broadband projects. For every dollar that is put in, the federal government will put in four. The package officially prefers municipalities to private companies getting this money, so this should be for public, not for private use, although they will give it for private use with some justification for public good. And, as I said before, this is to build for unserved, underserved, rural, and vulnerable populations. The unserved and underserved are not yet defined by the organization NTIA, which is supposed to define all of this stuff. We are hopefully going to get the definitions and all of the rules regarding the grants within the next month. So what we have been talking about in the Broadband Access Committee is having a fiber network throughout the two cities, including the university, and a fiber-to-the-premises network mostly as a pilot in low and moderate income areas, and this will end up providing us with the justification that we need for the federal grant dollars to be able to say, "We want to provide fiber to the premises to these places." What am I talking about when I say a fiber network? So, we're talking about fiber optic cables which can carry cable TV, voice, and, of course, internet data over fiber optics which will probably be laid in the ground, and these are much faster than copper networks like AT&amp;T and Comcast currently have. And you should keep in mind, and I won't go into the technical details, Mike went into some of that, and certainly I can answer some questions afterwards, but the fiber itself is the long-term property. You put electronics on the ends of those pieces of fiber optics, and that's what can go faster as the technology evolves, but the stuff that lays in the ground is there for a long time. What the plan involves is rings of these fiber throughout the city, throughout both cities, and those rings will connect up, they go near city services, they go near the schools, they're the libraries, and near the neighborhoods throughout the city, and they cover the entire twin cities. And then off of those rings will be trunk lines, and off of those trunk lines will be little branches which will eventually go to individual houses or businesses to the doorstep. What we're talking about is fiber to the premises in low and moderate income neighborhoods that covers a large proportion. I just saw the latest map, and hopefully Mike Smeltzer is floating behind me, and eventually we can get you copies of the latest map. But we've gone to both cities, and they've given us a layout of where those low and moderate income neighborhoods are. And initially, we're going to provide them with the fiber to the home, and we are thinking about hopefully offering some sort of cheap, universal access service for internet data, probably telephone. Eventually, the hope is not out of the federal stimulus money, because that's targeted, but eventually we would be able to build out to the rest of Champaign, Urbana with this fiber to the premises. So, anticipating a few questions. Don't we already have broadband in this town? Well, first of all, we don't have big broadband. We have copper in this town, which is provided both by Comcast, they have a copper plant for their cable TV, and now they're providing internet and some telephone service, and AT&amp;T has a copper plant. They are pulling some fiber optics, but that last hop to your house is still going to be copper. Obviously, the fiber, well, maybe not obviously, the fiber optics is much faster than the copper, on the order of 10 times faster than anything you could possibly get now from AT&amp;T or Comcast, and probably faster than that. Right now, we have an effective duopoly in town. So we have one copper provider that provides throughout the city, that's Comcast, and one, AT&amp;T, who is providing telephone and internet service now throughout the city, but they are slowly building out their cable TV service. That is only going to the richer neighborhoods in town first, eventually they hope to build out. One of the things that we really want to push here is that we are in effect doing exactly the reverse of the current business model. This is a legitimate business model for AT&amp;T. They'd be nuts to try and do low-income neighborhoods first. They wouldn't make any money that way. They wouldn't have a survival plan. But that's not necessarily in the interest of folks who don't have service now. What we want to do is provide service to the low-income folks first, and then build out eventually to higher-income neighborhoods. One thing to keep in mind is there is no real competition now, and we've talked for years about why don't we have more than one cable provider in town? The reason is, in order to provide that service, you'd have to pull your own copper plant or fiber plant, if you wanted to, to everybody's house. That's really, really expensive. So you also should keep in mind that wire to the house is part of the competitive strategy for Comcast and AT&amp;T. To get someone to pull a new piece of wire to your house, or to switch which wire you're using in your house, is a pain, and that actually keeps customers for them. There have been times, I'll talk about in a bit, where folks have done municipal networks like the one we're proposing, and have offered up to the incumbent carriers, "Do you want to use it?" And the answer is absolutely not. How are we going to keep customers if we do that? Part of their business model is to have that wire going to your house. Finally, right now, we get franchise fees from television service, we get some fees from the phone service, we get nothing from internet service. Finally, what I want to get across here is that municipal control of the plant, of the actual cables in the ground and to the houses, will spark real competition. How so? Well, there are lots of ways we could structure this, and we've talked about several in the committee. We could do this, if folks were inclined, as a full-out utility where the cities could provide every service on that cable, and provide internet service and telephone service, and you could have a very large staff. More likely, the cities would create some sort of utility board or nonprofit entity to run the actual physical plant, but might contract out maintenance or services, might franchise services so that other companies could come provide service but pay a fee to the city. The key is that in all of these cases, access to the network we have envisioned is open. That is, any company that wants to come along and hook up to this network and provide television service, internet service, even phone service, is welcome to do so. You get competition because it's an open network. Now, we will offer, I expect, if we were to get this, we will offer to AT&amp;T and Comcast that they could provide their service over the city network as well. My guess is they probably won't. Again, their business model is supported differently. But smaller providers who could never think of pulling cable through the entire twin cities here are now really in a position to compete. And of course, video and telephone are now starting to go over the internet, just the way Comcast is doing telephone over the internet. That means lower cost eventually, and potentially more providers. So, these are the numbers you've probably heard about before. This is a $30 to $35 million project. However, and this is something that I cannot stress enough, 80 percent of the money is going to come from the federal government. When we did the initial back-of-envelope, we have been, these are the numbers we were talking about, Urbana putting up a little over half a million dollars. That's a lot of money. I will repeat this more than once before I get to the end of my 10 slides here. I don't want to sugarcoat this. This is a big project. We are at minimum talking about the cities and the university setting up some sort of utility board. You should go in with your eyes open, but because 80 percent of this money is coming from the federal government, this is exactly the time to try and do something like this. So, Champaign is going to contribute a little over $900 million, university a little over $900 million?
Thousand.
Thousand. Ah! Well, that just excited a lot of people on the other side of Wright Street.
Right. Just everybody went, "Thank you."
920,000, 905,000, and the university apparently is already earmarked funds in this way. Public and private entities are being asked to invest in this as well. For private entities, and even for some of the public entities, this is a huge incentive because, right now, I want you to think about, for instance, we have several hospitals in town with all sorts of remote locations, and I don't know if you've ever noticed, but your doctor in their office brings up an x-ray that was done over in another office, or an MRI scan, and it comes right up on their computer. They are paying a pretty penny to get that kind of high-speed access to all of their locations. They could buy into this, have fiber set aside for themselves, they've now paid for their infrastructure. It's an incredible cost savings to many of the bigger businesses. One of the things I mentioned at the bottom, we're not sure yet, given the rules, whether in-kind contributions can be part of the funds that are going to be matched. One of the things that's amusing about Urbana, unlike Champaign, Bill D. Jarnett has been doing a good job of pulling fiber optics cables for our services in town, for the cities, for the city and the county offices. Well, we're a little ahead of the game in Urbana by having that fiber in the ground. Obviously, that can be reused. We would hope that the federal government would match that in-kind contribution of fiber that's already in the ground. We don't know if that's going to happen. This is the slide on which I have no answer for you folks. The how do we pay for this? And I don't mean I don't have suggestions, but this is really what the Broadband Access Committee is not touching. This is an issue that the city council and city staffs really have to take a hard look at and decide how this goes. Many communities have done bond issues for these things, straight-up loans. I know some of the areas involved here are in CDBG areas and TIP areas. I don't know if that helps you any. This is something for your staff to take a look at, but remember that the intention is that using, building this network is going to create a revenue-positive entity, that this is going to bring in money in the long run. So those revenues, whether they come from people who are buying service or from people who are providing service, paying fees to the city, those can pay off those loans and will also pay for the ongoing maintenance of the network. I want to assure you that we are not full-out pioneers in this area. You are not the first folks to have done this. A lovely presentation, I wish I could get him up here to give a presentation, by the mayor of Lafayette, Louisiana, who is a dyed-in-the-wall-business guy, and went out and basically said, "We're going to build this thing because it makes business sense." They are completing fiber-to-the-premises throughout Lafayette, Louisiana in 2010. They used revenue bonds to fund it, and they are providing all of the services. They actually have a large utility commission that provides electric and everything else in Lafayette, although he did say that that actually turned out to be a bad idea because utilities that know how to run electric plants don't know much about internet and phone service, and that was actually a little bit of a problem for them. Burlington, Vermont, used, and I have no idea what this is, honestly, tax-exent lease purchase financing. I'm sure Ron can tell you what it is. Powell, Wyoming partnered with a local telco and built out a plant of fiber that is municipally-owned. There have been others, the Utopia Net in Utah, the Mountain Area Internet in North Carolina. All of these have already either been built or are completing and have not used any stimulus funds, and they seem to be paying it off in a revenue-positive manner. So, where are we at? Mike Smeltzer from the U of I, who's come to talk to you, has been working on the technical plan and doing a lot of the legwork. Mike and I met with Urbana City staff a few weeks ago to go over some of their concerns. It was a great meeting, very positive. I think they at least know how this could be done. I don't make any promises of whether they think it is going to be easy. I very much doubt that. Broadband Access Committee has held several community forums. We met once with the Graduate School of Library and Information Sciences over on campus. They held a community forum. We had two more, one at the Urbana Library, one at the Champaign Library, to get community input into this. We got lots of great ideas from the community and a lot of positive feedback. Currently, we are in the process of forming writing teams to put together the proposals for the technical plan, the operational plan, what kinds of job development, all part of the grant writing. We are starting to get these together. Tonight, we're speaking to the Urbana City Council, tomorrow to the Champaign City Council. You will notice a lot of this is happening quickly and all at once. As I said, normally this would have been, the Broadband Access Committee makes a report to the Cable Commission, which makes a report to the mayor, who makes a report to you, and we're doing this all in parallel because it all came at us kind of quick. That look of deer in the headlights that you see in my eyes is not your imagination. This is a big undertaking. 80 percent match might never happen again, and this is the kind of thing that could be very revenue-positive for Urbana in the long run. It is now the time to do this. Things are going to happen rather quickly. The rules from the NTIA are coming out this month, or so we've been told, we don't know that for sure. The availability of funds likely a month thereafter. We would have to submit a proposal probably 60 days thereafter. That means that we are going to need both cities to commit to an intergovernmental agreement with the university sometime in August with the funds committed. Any questions? And I'm happy to turn to my cohorts here.
Questions, mayor.
Thank you, Pete.
You're very welcome.
I love it when people tell you how the city can invest in things and make money doing it.
So we hope.
Anyone else before I jump in? I guess just a couple of little technical things. So, come August, if everything falls into place, would the city basically be, have to be in position to issue revenue bonds or some other kind of funding?
We won't know about the funding decisions until the end of the year.
Okay. We just have to be ready to commit.
I think you have to be ready to commit sometime in August.
Okay.
I don't think the bond issue has to happen.
Yeah, and I guess, I know what the technical skills are in this community. I've seen the sanitary district, for example, is essentially an intergovernmental agreement. They run a very nice utility, essentially. And this is a question for you and Mike. Do we have the technical and managerial expertise to run big broadband in this community?
Yes. All things considered, if the university were to start managing this, this would be only about a 25 percent increase in what the university currently manages in terms of numbers of connections. My staff manages some 60,000 to 80,000 connections on campus, 300 buildings. This would, it's never, nothing's ever simple, but this is well within the technical expertise that we have. We manage a network that goes between here to Chicago to Springfield and back at multiple gigabits and landas and so forth. This is not outside of the realm of what we can do.
And just so people know, as I'm one of his customers, so, and it does work, so. Other questions for Pete? David?
Well, one of the questions I have, just given the incredible shortness of this timescale, is the sort of commitment you're asking is not just fiscal commitment part of the city, but also staff time in helping with the getting this proposal together, because it's a very short fuse, and I'm wondering what estimate you have on what the impact on staff time will be, because it's a significant thing, that if we say, "Okay, let's put the hammer down on this," then there are other things that have to get pushed off.
And I think there are short-term and long-term investments of staff time. In the short term, and Mike has been running with this project for a while now. As a matter of fact, this all came out of a brainchild of Mike several years ago, which he came to the Broadband Access Committee with when we were still in pie-in-the-sky mode and said, "This is pie in the sky, and maybe we could get the university to invest in this." So, this has been going for a while. But in the short term, doing some sort of agreement between the cities and the university to set up some entity to do the grant submission, to do the actual receiving of the funds, should that happen. There are ways to do that in a smaller manner, such that the city does not have to have a utility board all ready to go by the time the grant submission happens. So, and I think Mike can talk a little bit about what the city attorneys have been chatting about, but we've got short, medium, and long term what the entity would look like.
The, there's really two stages of this. One stage is just applying for the grant and building out what the grant supplies in terms of the infrastructure and the equipment and so forth. The operations of it wouldn't really start till almost 16, 18 months from now, and by then, we certainly have to have a plan for how we're going to operate it, but given that period of time, that gives us time to be very cautious and careful about how we go about doing that. The actual construction parts, this is really just a big construction project to get started, and university's already engaged a fiber construction expert that's helping us do in some of the planning, and we're thinking he would overall supervise the project, and that whatever money came, whatever construction was going to have to be in Urbana, that money would actually flow to the city, and then the city would do the bidding in terms of the engineering, do the bidding in terms of the construction, all under Bob's supervision, but that you would control it. So Bill Gray, for instance, would have final say on where each duct goes, and make sure it fits in with all the other cities' plans for what's going on to your streets. Same thing would happen in Champaign. A little bit of construction happens on campus, but the majority of it's out in the communities, obviously.
Dan?
So about $25 million or so would be coming from the federal government?
Somewhere between 24 and 28, depending on how big this ends up being.
So, my question is, this much money flowing in, where does it flow through? And typically, if it flows through the university, they take 58.5 percent in indirect costs.
We've had long conversations about that.
Do we have an agreement or an understanding that that won't happen?
There's, that's one of the reasons for sub-awarding the construction to the two cities. Subawards are not subject to ICR recovery by the university, or the first $25,000 are, but after that. Big equipment purchases are not subject to that as well. So we're, we certainly don't want to screw my employer, so to speak, but at the same time, we don't want them taking 58 percent because we wouldn't have a competitive grant if we did that. So by sub-awarding the construction to the two cities, by having, and also, there's a lot of equipment that needs to be purchased, that reduces the amount that would be subject to that sort of recovery from the university.
And they're agreeable to that?
Seem to be so far. I mean, the university, I mean, those are just their rules. We're just playing by their rules. I mean, that's how they do business. It's also possible that the NTIA will say for all applicants across the country that we will only allow X percentage of cost recovery, and if that's the case, the university typically lives with whatever restrictions are built into the grant.
But we don't know what that is yet.
We don't.
Okay.
We have suggested a number to the NTIA, I believe that was 3 percent, which is what NTIA gets from Congress for administering this process. That's substantially less than 58.
Okay. I guess my second question is, are you envisioning sites being the technical administrator on the campus end?
In the early stages, yes. As, there's going to be kind of an awkward period where we'll As, there's going to be kind of an awkward period where we'll have one year to go and finishing construction, but we'll already have homes started in the first phase. And probably for that overlap period where we're still building and moving forward, I think my staff can help manage the broad, the base backbone network, the actual connections into your home. Let's say we had three providers, and one of those providers happened to be Volo. Do I hear Volo anywhere? You would actually pay Volo for the service, and if something broke or if you had a question, you would call Volo for your service. So we wouldn't be putting a great burden on the university. University staff would be running the backbone, but not be dealing with the individual customers.
Okay.
Mayor?
I was interested to see the different kinds of financing. And revenue bonds are one thing, but there are other bonds that might even be less expensive.
Absolutely.
And I think it'd be kind of a tragedy for the university and this community if we're going to be leaders in technology not to take advantage of this opportunity.
And I think the flip side to that is, because we are such leaders, because the university's involved, because we can propose this community-owned network, we're way ahead of the game as far as one of the potential recipients of these grants, so, yeah.
Brendan?
Yeah, I was wondering, Pete and Mike, the one, the one piece of the story that I didn't hear you talk much about was one that I got when I went to one of these three public input sessions that you had with the community, where I heard about the Boys and Girls Club writing part of the grant to sort of open a community lab in their facility, and just all the organizations around town that were planning to get connected and offer computing centers in their neighborhoods. I wondered if you could describe a bit about that and just give the group here a picture of those players and of that way of reaching out to people.
And I did gloss over that. We've got several writing teams that are working on community aspects, on education aspects. So you should keep in mind that this is not just about businesses, and it's not just about homes. One of the things that we've envisioned, for example, is schools being able to service kids who are at home, either they're sick or otherwise, because you'd be able to run video two ways over this kind of service. Now, equipment would need to be gotten, and that's part of the, what we're proposing in the grant to talk about. But think about schools providing those kind of services, churches being able to interact with their homebound seniors who have not been to the church in a while, but want to be able to get connected back up with those folks. The Boys and Girls Clubs and other community organizations providing services such that kids could come in and use computers in their facilities. For those community organizations to interact, because they would have high-speed network between them, all of these are possibilities for uses of this, and certainly is part of what we're working on in the proposal.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you later. Oh, Mike?
When I was here a couple of months ago, you guys got actually the very first version of this, and we're now on version nine. So I think it's about time to give you copies of the updated version, which will not keep you up at night, but give you some new reading.
You mean you're not sending it to us electronically?
We can give it to you electronically, but it's much nicer to have the tactile.
Just puts you to sleep faster, you know?
Yes. We'll email to those who...
I planted a lot of trees every day.
I just, you know, on my desk tonight is this pad of paper I hear. It comes from Public Works. They've bound together scrap paper that's blank on one side and used on the other. It's great. So if you don't double-side print, this is a good reuse.
I'll recycle your old covers for you.
Okay. I'll mention it tonight. Okay, next up is ordinance number 200906057, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, Illinois, the rezoning of 714 West California Street from R2 Single Family Residential to R7, University Residential's Plan Case Number 2106M09 concerning Kevin and Julia Webster. Does community development have anything to add? No. Mr. Webster?
Yes.
Did you have anything to add?
Well, we had put together a, one of the questions that had come up before was, was our intent to, you know, have it as for students only in the house, and it was not. And as, what we showing our intent with, with that is that we have, we put together a list of, you know, who we had in our, in our student rental for the time period, and we just have a, we have a lease history, basically, showing that we had, you know, the house full the whole time.
Okay, and CD has a copy of that, or?
I just gave Jeff a copy of that.
Okay. We do have some people from the public that wish to speak, so I need to let them go up next. And we did, so Jean Paley wishes to speak, and so she'll be up next. I also have, received a fax from Mary Williams, PhD, who owns the property of 704 West Illinois Street and is opposed to the rezoning. I think all council members have a copy of that as well. Jean Paley, 706 West California.
An awful lot has been said. You have in front of you or have received a ton of information, both from the Websters and from a lot of other people who have put in input. I would like to say the following. The city council is a legislative body, not a court of law. And making ex post facto modifications of ordinances to benefit individuals, asking for exemptions, is not an appropriate role for the council, no matter how much you like the petitioner. If you would like to change the ordinance, that's a different matter. And then you have hearings, and you have community input, and you discuss this publicly. You do not make an exemption for a single individual, no matter what. It's very bad policy. The University of Illinois has been in hot water recently, if you've been reading the newspapers. They have, out of, out of public sight, been granting exemptions to the sons and daughters and nieces and nephews of people with political power, allowing students who would otherwise not be able to get into the university because they weren't qualified to gain entry. This, don't do the same thing. It should be a cautionary tale. Please do not do the same thing. Do you want to be Solomon, I mean, do you want to sit as a Solomon in judgment of every petitioner who comes before you? I suppose you could, but I don't think that that's your role. This is a very, very, very bad idea. The block that the Webster's house is on is the block that my house is on. The Webster's house is approximately the same size as my house, which I do not consider an enormously large house. The difference between the two is that my attic holds my kids' stuff from when they were young and won't take now, the winter clothes in the summer, the summer clothes in the winter, papers that we're going to do something with someday, instead of two bedrooms and a bath. The other difference is that the Webster's backyard is concrete, so that it can accommodate all those cars that need to be parked, if you have eight people living in a house. Mine has flowers and other greenery. This is a fragile block. On the block, on my side, on the north side, I get confused, on the north side of California Street between Bucie and Kohler, there are three single-family residences. Except for 704 West California, which is a proper apartment building, all of those houses used to be single-family residences. I went to the assessor's office this afternoon and picked up a little bit more history than I had of 714, and it's been, it was designated as a duplex in 1952. So it has been a duplex for a long time. It has never been designated as a rooming house. Across the street, it's zoned R7. This building is zoned R2. Next to 714 at 712 and also at 710 are two rooming houses that are in dreadful condition. I mean, really bad. There is nothing to prevent 714 from becoming one of those very quickly. I know that the Websters would like to sell this property, and I base that upon two emails. One from, I'm sure I brought them. One from, yeah, one from Dave Barr, a realtor, and another from Henry Samansky, both stating that the value of the property as, as a rental would be greatly increased by converting to R7. Hence, it would be much more saleable, and this is really all about money. It's not about anything else. It's certainly not about the neighborhood. So I leave you with that, and I urge you to make an intelligent decision and not to, in this case, use the university as your beacon and your guideline. Thank you.
Questions for Jean?
Yeah.
So none, thank you much.
Thanks.
Committee's pleasure. No, that's, that's it. We have received a number of emails. I've lost track of the number, but it's substantial, from the neighborhood, all opposing the rezoning. I believe everybody's been copied on it. We've got a memo from Legal as well, so, committee's pleasure. Brendan?
Yeah, I guess I'll sort of describe where I stand at this point and what I think we could do to move forward. There's, of course, two separate cases here, right? The zoning is separate from the issue of the use and the legally non-conforming piece. On the zoning, I think I'm ready to make a motion to send this to council so that we can take an up or down vote on the zoning. And as I stated last week, I don't recommend the upzoning. The zoning changed, so I would make a motion at some point, or I'm comfortable doing that to deny the upzoning. On the use, which is substantially more complex, I came prepared to make a motion for one of these sort of creative solutions. We started talking about how do we handle the complexities of this and the histories of the use here. But I actually am not going to make that motion, and I don't support it. After spending the week trying to figure out how to best handle this case in a creative way, the best possible way that I'd come to was, was this idea of the motion that we ask our zoning administrator to make a new determination of the use that would allow the owners to appeal it and allow the ZBA and the Circuit Court to really hear out the facts. We're not the right body to, you know, go through historical records and hear all the facts and make a finding of fact like, like a court is or a hearing officer. And so I was planning to have a motion where we could invite that. But I don't think that's needed now for two reasons. First, the, there's no way in that motion to really say that we could limit that to the current occupants, the current owners, or time limited in any way. And so there's no way to really do it in a way that helps the current owners to rehab the house, to be good neighbors, to continue to run a really beautiful historic rehab in a way that's not as dense as some of the other rooming houses are. But there's no way to limit or tailor what we would do to just the current owners and to just that sort of rehab project. And second, even without that motion, the same thing is possible. The current owners can go to the Circuit Court and can appeal and can lay out all those facts and let the court decide what the history of this use is. So I've actually come to the feeling that even without a motion and without us starting anything, that's, that's the possible way forward for the owners if they choose to seek to somehow regain or win back the legally non-conforming rooming house use that once existed. So with that, on the use side of the case, I don't feel that there is a need for a motion. I feel that the, you know, the courts are the next venue, and we didn't come to, to any creative solution that solves all these problems in a nice way, but really, the court is the group that's best able to hear this out. And on the zoning side, again, as I mentioned, depending on how other people feel tonight, I'm prepared to make a motion that we send the zoning piece back to city council, and I personally would recommend denial. So that's my thoughts after talking to a lot of people, after trying to hear out facts, after trying to figure out what are the possible different ways to handle the disagreements about use and about whether the legally non-conforming use was ever abandoned, and all those things that I began probing about last week when I asked a lot of questions. And I'm curious if other people feel differently, and if other people feel like we should proceed in that way.
Dan?
I also do not support upzoning this from R2, R7, and I would support the motion to deny that. On the other issue of use, I spent a lot of time thinking about this over the weekend and reading all the material that was provided to us, and came down to a few things. One is why spend so much time thinking about these cases? Well, the answer is, this is a city of renters. The last census revealed that almost two-thirds of the households in this town are rental properties, and any decisions you make in any particular neighborhood, or even with one particular property, are going to affect every neighborhood in the city, because we have so many rental properties. So that makes it very, very important that we consider this very carefully. Secondly, I've been a landlord in West Urbana for over 30 years. We've owned old houses exactly like this that had been carved up into apartments before we purchased them. We've spent years and years and years maintaining them, upgrading them, and renting them. And it comes down to time, money, and materials that you put into a building. And if you're going to be a successful landlord over the long term, you have to balance those three things. How much time, materials, and money you put into a property versus how much you can reasonably expect to get out. And it's a really tough, it's a tough balance. You can over-improve a property, and you end up putting so much effort and so much money into it that you have to charge, you're locked into a rent. And it's not just for individual owners, some of these big, I look at these big luxury apartments on Green Street, and the incredible amount of money and high-end, you know, materials used in there, and they're locked into renting those bedrooms for $1,200 a month. Is that sustainable? I don't know. So on the other hand, you've got landlords who've let their properties deteriorate, slide into disrepair, and it's, and they just want to get the profit out of it. But the key is to find a balance. The other key to being a successful landlord is to do due diligence before you purchase a property. Find out what the zoning is, find out what the implications are. All these old houses have very murky histories. I don't think there's any house in West Urbana that has a clear history. And this is just an example, many examples. You do your due diligence, you find out what the zoning is, you find out what the implications of your actions are going to be before you do them. And especially if you're talking about changing the configuration of your houses. We didn't change the configuration of the houses, because if we had, it would, well, it would have been illegal. And so we kept them the way they were. So the particular history on this house, as I read through it, and it became clear to me, there were two things that I found very troubling. One is there was really, the due diligence wasn't there before the property was purchased and before the renovations were begin. And then what struck me was just this consistent, repeated violation of the law once the law was known. And, and even after being notified of overoccupancy in 2004, there were three more years went by when there was overoccupancy. And then in 2007, finally, the city took this owner to court. They pled guilty, they were fined $10,000. Eighty percent of that was waived if they complied. They complied for a year to meet the terms of the waiver, and then it went back to overoccupancy. So there's this consistent pattern here. And I think we need to be clear, consistent, and not do any spot zoning, but also, in fairness to other landlords who have obeyed the law and who... the law and who have adhered to, to the zoning and the codes, we need to be fair to them.
Sign off for the discussion. Is there a motion? Brendan?
Yeah, I guess then I would make my motion to send this case, this ordinance, 2006-057, to city council with a recommendation for denial of the rezoning.
Second.
It's been moved by Brendan, signed by Diane. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of sending this back to council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This goes back to council next week. Thank you. Next up is a discussion of tenant relocation assistance. We have a number of people who wish to speak, and the four are, in this order, Esther Pat, Mark Ensland, Daniel Chenoweth, and Randy Cotton. Esther, it's 706 South Color.
Thank you. When tenants are forced to move out of an apartment or a house before the lease is up because the landlord failed to crack code violations or the landlord terminated utility service unlawfully, the landlord owes the tenants compensation for the damages that they suffered as a result of the landlord's breach of the contract. The landlord would owe the tenants refund of any prepaid rent and damage deposit, the cost of moving, renting a moving van or hiring a moving company, the cost of reconnecting utilities, reasonable costs for temporary alternative housing like a hotel or motel till they found a new place, and the difference in rent between what they were paying at the place from which they were ejected and a comparable apartment. And in case there are any tenants listening to this, if you move out of Scottswood Manor into Amber Point, you are not going to get the difference in rent because those are not comparable and that could be a little dicey, but that's the basic concept. Because landlords owe this to tenants when such things happen, several cities and states have passed laws that, that are similar to the proposal that was presented to you a couple of weeks ago. The state of Connecticut actually has a state Supreme Court ruling that is 25 years old requiring the city to pay the cost for relocating tenants when the city caused the tenants to be ejected from the property. And Connecticut also now has a state statute as well, as does Massachusetts and New Jersey. And there may be others. I just put out a message to a listserv of, of legal aid attorneys asking, does anyone know about relocation laws in your area? And I got responses from people in those states. Also Burlington, Vermont, and San Francisco, California have municipal ordinances providing for that. And the basic concept is that while the landlord owes this money to the tenant, they don't always pay it and they, and even if the tenant were to sue them for it, which would be the next course of action, that doesn't solve the problem of the tenant has to move out today and it would take, in Champaign County, it would take at least eight months to get into Circuit Court. So, how does the tenant live for eight months until they collect this money? And the basic provision of the proposal before you was that the city front the money to the tenant and then collect it, pursue the collection from the landlord. And I really want to emphasize that because I was, I was rather saddened by the staff memo on this. I, I think what was presented was really a straw man, worst-case scenario of a building where 100 tenants are displaced and the landlord has filed bankruptcy, so the city's going to have to shell out over $200,000 and never be able to collect. Such a circumstance could arise, I suppose, but there are places, apartment complexes that have over 100 tenants. But in many cases, and in fact, the real case that happened here in Urbana that prompted me to first raise this issue at a community development block grant hearing 18 months ago, and one of the reasons I'm here today, having gone through that whole experience, involved two tenants, two households. One of them had families she could go stay with, the other was a young mother, single mom with a nine-month-old baby. And to the best of my knowledge, she was homeless because the city of Urbana wouldn't, couldn't come up with the $1,130 that she needed for a deposit and first month's rent. That is the kind of tragedy that you are in the power, that you have the power to prevent. At the very least, and I, and I don't mean to start out by compromising, but because of the hostile attitude toward the proposal from the administration, at the very least, it's just plain foolish of you not to pass an ordinance that states a landlord is required to pay this assistance to a tenant and that if the city were to pay the money, that that would be a debt that the landlord would owe to the city. By doing that, you would give yourselves the option of paying relocation assistance in situations you thought were appropriate and being able to collect it from the landlord. I don't know, you'd have to ask the city attorney, if you didn't have an ordinance that specifically required the landlord to reimburse you for that, if you could ever collect that money. Everyone keeps saying about this proposal, what's the revenue source? The revenue source is the landlord. And I'll give you just the one example because this was something real that happened in Urbana two years ago. And also, I'm just going to mention the owner's name once because he sat in this chair a week ago and told you a ridiculous story about that, that Daniel Chenoweth was proposing that he pay $2,000 apiece to a bunch of criminals who vandalized his building and of course, that's just stupid and of course, that's not what the proposal is. On February 22nd, 2007, I received a call from Gabriel Omoasagi, who owns 1507 East Washington, which is actually three apartment buildings, I think there are 12 units, and he said, Esther, I just want to tell you, I evicted all my tenants at 1507 East Washington. And I, I work at the tenant union, actually at the University of Illinois where we deal with students, and so I didn't know if he had any student tenants there or if he was just calling to tell me this, but he called to tell me this. The first thing I said when he said that was, all the tenants, Gabe, did you evict all of them? And he said, well, most of them. Oh, this makes a difference. Anytime he says to you, all, ask, do you really mean all? I pulled up the Circuit Clerk's website and entered his company name and sure enough, there were 18 judgments for possession, I believe they were all for non-payment of rent, in that day and I think two days before, of people who lived at 1507 East Washington. So he did have a bunch of tenants who weren't paying rent and he evicted them. The next I heard, so I thought I'll wait and see if I hear anything, and I told the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union, which serves non-students, mostly low-income people, in case they heard anything. The next I heard was on March 2nd, when Libby Tyler here at the city sent me an email saying that the property had been vandalized and compromised the fire safety of, of the vandalism compromised the fire safety of the property, and the city was posting a notice on that day, March 2nd, that if, the inspector had been out on March 1st citing the number of code violations. There had also been, I filed the Freedom and Information Act request, there were code violations cited in January before the vandalism occurred, but I don't know the status of that and if those had anything to do with the condemnation. At any rate, March 2nd, notice was going to be posted that the tenants, that the building would be condemned on March 9th if the violations were not corrected and the tenants would have to vacate by March 23rd, two weeks later. I'll just stop and point out, it's really bad timing to post a notice like that the day after rent is due, and that is part of what created the crisis, but I do not fault the code enforcement staff here because the request for the inspection came March 1st, they went out March 2nd, they couldn't do anything about that. I would say that if the city officials did not fear that anyone was going to die from living there from March 2nd to March 23rd, it certainly would have been more human of you, humane, to have given the tenants till April 2nd rather than till March 23rd. By requiring them to move out March 23rd, an automatic crisis was created because people had already paid their rent. As it turns out, I don't know how many, but tenet, Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union heard from two households who had paid their rent. And so, the day after they paid rent, they get a notice saying, you're going to have to move out before the month is up. That is a real problem. But actually, that became a moot point because on March 9th, the day the city put up the condemnation notice, even though the city had said residents could live there two more weeks, the owner of the property shut off the water service. I heard about this at a quarter to five on Friday, March 9th, not the best time to get things resolved, from the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union. Lisa Mandermark had told me that she'd gotten calls from two women out there whose rent was paid and she had called the owner of the property and she told him that their rent includes water, you have to turn the water back on, that didn't work, she read a mistake statute about interrupting service, that didn't work. She asked him to give back their deposit and last month's rent, I mean, the month's rent that they paid, or at least 23 days of the month's rent, and he refused. And they said the money wasn't theirs anyway because they were, they were both households on Section 8, so the housing authority had paid it. And of course, the housing authority pays part, but not all of it. Well, then give it back to the housing authority. No, he wasn't giving the money back. I called Mayor Pressing and Libby Tyler and Clay Byer, the housing inspector. I think all three of them called the owner, I'm not sure, and he just said, no, he wasn't going to turn the water back on. He told someone in this mix, I forget, who, he offered $200 to the single mom with the baby. This is just like what happened at Gateway, we'll give you $200. $200 is not relocation assistance. $200 is get you out of the public eye. Enough money for three nights in the hotel and then you're homeless, and which is what happened to I don't know how many people at Gateway, and that's what would have happened to this woman too. She didn't want the 200, she wanted, she needed a deposit of month's rent. Well, I guess everyone calling helped because at 5:15, Gabe called me and said, I'm turning the water back on. And at 5:30, I got a call from one of the tenants, that the one who had the phone, saying the water was turned back on, and that was Friday. Tuesday, he shut the water off again. In the meantime, the tenant found another place to live, not the best place, but it was next door at Woodstone Townhomes, but they wanted a deposit and first month's rent, $1,130. That's what she needed. She did not have any money at all. She needed $1,130 and either money for a moving truck or two big, strong people, since it was just next door, to pick up her furniture and carry it next door. She didn't get that. I don't know what happened to her, I assume she was homeless because I didn't hear, she was not the one with the phone, the one with the baby, I didn't hear about it afterward. Giving someone in that circumstance a list of resources is worthless. There was reference made in the staff memo to the $90,000 that the United Way says they've earmarked, and I don't know what their plans are with that money, but if the plans, their plans with the money is to do something like give people $200, that does not help, that does not relocate people. No one can move in anywhere with $200. There, I don't know any place in this town where you can move in without paying a month's rent, and most people want, landlords want a month's rent and damage deposit. I called the Regional Planning Commission, I know two of you are on the RPC board. Regional Planning Commission will tell anyone who calls, we only give $125. Now, which is their policy. I know they give more because I used to be on the Regional Planning Commission board and I know, I used to see the list of bills every month, I thought, wow, there's a whole lot of people getting more than the $125. But, in order to get the money, and I called them again about Gateway, they, first of all, they won't give damage deposit money, they'll only give rent. The tenant, when I called about Gateway, they said the tenants have to have a year's lease, so that blew it for all those people because those were all people renting month by month or week by week. The person has to be employed. So, even if it is someone who is surviving in some way without employment, if they're not employed at the time, RPC will not help them and then they have to go through paperwork and bureaucracy, it takes a few days, they have to make an appointment, they have to get a social security card for every member of their household, which includes a nine-month-old baby, et cetera. That's not emergency assistance. I think you can do better than just turn a cold heart toward the people who weren't homeless until the city took action, and not that your action is wrong, but the proposal here is not that you provide assistance to prevent all homelessness, it's just one type of homelessness, when people will become homeless because the city closed the place down. And in those cases, it certainly would be good if the city would take responsibility for, since you have a $42 million budget and often the people who are being displaced are living paycheck to paycheck, if you would take responsibility for fronting the money to relocate people and collecting it back from the landlord. I'll say one other thing, I, every single word of the, of the proposal was discussed I don't necessarily agree with. I don't think you should put dollar amounts like $2,000 in an ordinance because 10 years from now, $2,000 will not be what it is today, but the concept of having a daily fine for each day that the landlord does not reimburse you is a good thing. If you had had a law in place two years ago when this incident happened at 1507 East Washington, probably the possibility of you being able to collect money back from the landlord would have gotten him to cough it up in the first place. And if not, if you had fronted the money so that those, those two households, even that one, were not, were not homeless, and then you had gone to the owner and said to him, no, this, you've got to pay us back this money and if you don't pay, the fine is going to be $50 a day, he probably would have paid you without you taking him to court. And worst-case scenario, if you had to take him to court, you would have, by this time, that was two years ago, you already have the money back by now. We're talking about someone who owns at least--
Can you wrap it up, Esther? I've got a lot of other people.
Four apartment buildings in Urbana, four apartment buildings in Champaign, commercial property in Urbana. I mean, it's not, it's not like everyone you're going to be condemning is going to be someone who can't pay. In fact, most of the time, they are people who continue to do thriving businesses as this owner does too. And I'm sorry it took so long by what I was to tell you all that information. Any questions?
Questions for Esther.
Yes.
Okay, you said that other cities did this. Do you know how it has worked in terms of getting reimbursed from the landlord? Any statistics on that?
I don't know, I don't know any specific statistics, but as I said, you, you know, if you, anytime, if you're dealing with anyone other than someone who's gone under and has no money and you've got to stand in line behind the bank and who else in a, and I'm even sure where the city falls in the line, maybe city attorney knows that, when, when someone goes bankrupt as far as who gets paid and who doesn't, I mean, I know the tenant will never get their deposit back when that happens, I don't know where the city would fall, but other than that happening, in any other circumstance, you're in a position to collect because they own property, you know? And, and even if they leave town, the property's still there. If nothing else, you can get a lien against the property, but often what you can get is, is get them to pay on the judgment if you even have to go that far. Yeah, Brendan?
Yeah, Esther, I just wanted to make sure I understood one more thing, and you touched on it. The, the House bill, which I read, seems to me to very clearly say, and tell me if I misunderstand, that the responsibility of paying these falls on the landlord--
Yes, that's right.
And that the city may, and that was the key word that when I read it, I was like, oh, I'm confused, I better read this again. The city may front the money--
Right.
--and seek to collect it--
Right.
--from the landlord by the means you've talked about, but there doesn't seem to be in the whole thing, any requirement, you know, the city could decide to use needs-based criteria to decide who has a need for the money. The city could also say that, well, if our pool of funds for this is depleted, then we may not be able to pay and we could choose not to. There doesn't seem to be an obligation, and I wondered if I'm reading that right--
Well, I think the House doesn't matter because the House bill isn't, isn't what's--
Isn't passed at law.
--being debated here. And, right, that was just a sample, that was just sample language of how to, how to approach it because that was what we had handy because, and, and I don't know, I didn't actually speak to Representative Jacobson or Osterman about this, but I suspect they got the idea from these other states that have similar laws.
Okay.
And they had to be more general in what they described in there too because that was a state law for what municipalities should do--
Yes.
--as opposed to a municipality saying, what are we going to do?
Yes.
Just one other thing, don't focus on funds depleted. This whole idea of we're going to have this little fund we built up, this is money you will get back, okay? That's, you have to, you should think, and you, I suppose in each situation you can look at and see, but if you did not, if you only, you only have $2,000 in the fund right now, and I think it's CDBG money that you can only use in the target area. If you condemned on a six-unit apartment building that had four tenants, four tenant households tomorrow, and it was not in the CDBG target area, and the owner was someone who had 15 apartment buildings in Champaign, Urbana, you don't need to look at that $2,000 fund. You could take it out of reserves. In the same way that we open the public purse and give hundreds of thousands, sometimes millions of dollars to developers, you know, the stone creep, three and a half million, 30 years, the city will have got, recovered the money back, but somehow it found the money to put up front in the meantime. Putting up front $1,000, you know, $130, you don't need a fund to dip into it unless you are certain that you're dealing with someone who's, who's never going to be able to pay it up. And in most cases, you're not. You're dealing with people who will be able to pay it back to you. So it's really a cash flow issue. It's not, it's not like giving a grant, even if the relocation costs $40,000, it's not a $40,000 grant, it's you're fronting the $40,000 and then collecting it, probably with fines, from the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Esther.
Thank you.
Next up, Mark Ensland, 207 West Indiana.
Thank you for letting me speak to this. There are a few things that I would like to put some emphasis on, and one has to do with whether this is a problem that the city council feels is necessary to deal with. About 15 years ago, I heard a theater group at the McKinley Chapel of homeless people from Chicago. So it was, they had gotten together and they made a theater company and they had all been homeless. And one episode of this presentation was simply answering the question, how I became homeless. It's, this is a big word that if you haven't been homeless, it's hard to know what the dimensions are and what, how dire that can be. So, there was a guy who talked about, his wife died and he was grieving, and two months later, from the depression from this episode that could happen to almost anybody, he didn't have a place to live. Another person was diagnosed with a serious illness, he didn't have health insurance. This, in combination with other aspects of didn't have a job, led to him, in addition to all these problems, not having a place to live. The amount of disruption of not having a place to live is huge, precisely because the people that this happens to have all sorts of other problems going on. Mental illness, substance abuse, violence, all sorts of things. So, anything that the city can do to mitigate this large-scale problem of homelessness is a really good thing to do. Mitigate. Not-- Mitigate, not solve, but in certain instances, do something that would keep someone from going over that edge, from having a place to live and struggling to having no place to live and struggling even worse. Another reason that this is a problem that would be worth the city council dealing with is that it's part of a problem that is a pattern. So it's not just there was one really odd circumstance of this one landlord somehow not paying utility bills, but actually in this past year, there have been several instances in cities in Champaign County where this has happened. So if there's a problem that's a pattern, that suggests, hmm, maybe legislation could address this in some way. You all are lucky in that some citizens of your city have gotten together and come up with a proposal, an idea, that I think is worth not dismissing and really taking seriously, even if you don't accept all of its parameters, to say, um, there are some structures in this that seem to really address this particular pattern that is part of this larger-scale problem that might let you mitigate homelessness for people. And there's one aspect of it that I think became controversial, and I think it'd be good to just look again at it, which is, here is a program that's been proposed that pays for itself. And that is not always the case with legislation that, you know, with ordinances the city considers valuable, and they allocate tax monies for this, et cetera. But this one actually has a pretty clear idea of where the money that might be needed to mitigate someone's being homeless through their, not actions of their own, but through their landlord doing something wrong. There's actually a source of funding that can take care of this. And the, the point about if there is some glitch between the landlord supplying that money for the relocation, it's a timing issue, as Esther just said, comes up, there's even a mechanism for that. And I think that could be addressed in some well-composed legislation. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions for Mayor.
Well, I want to say that we have already considered this in a proposed ordinance that we have, the Chronic Criminal Nuisance Ordinance, that if we had to close an apartment, that we would fine the landlord and that money could be used for the tenants. So we're already working on the concept.
Good.
And we do have, you know, we did set up a very small fund after the incident that we had here. I think it was on Colorado Avenue where some people had to be moved because the roof caved in in an apartment building. We set up a very small fund of $2,000. But I think the concern of the staff was if the landlord is bankrupt, would we be able to get the money? But obviously, if they've got other properties, that might not be a problem. But that was one of the concerns.
Well, I just would like to add to this, one, one component of the proposed legislation about this particular thing, and not with the one that you mentioned, was that this has in it an aspect where a landlord, when they go into renting property, they know that they've got these various expenses they're supposed to take care of. And this would be an upfront piece of knowledge that if they do something like that, they have this responsibility.
Other questions?
Yeah, the other thing is that Urbana tries to, to get these problems before they reach that level.
Yes, exactly. And I think this, this proposal would be a component of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Next up is Danielle Chenoweth of 412 West Illinois Street.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to put this down so I can see. So we're facing a recession, and this includes job loss, this includes loss of housing, it includes homelessness. And I think in some ways, we have an opportunity, looking at Gateway, Autumn Glen, and some of these situations, to use this as a wake-up call for us to do something. And I think, I think that actually in both talking with the city of Champaign, as well as talking to you all and getting your kind of first blush response, I think there's willingness, there's political will to do something. And I think everyone understands that the situation in Gateway was unjust and that a series of people and their children faced homelessness. Okay? So that's kind of given, the question is, okay, now what do we do given this, this circumstance? So I think there's three, at least three actions we should consider. I'd like to speak to the third. The first is boosting affordable housing. The second is, is identifying and removing barriers to housing. And the third is addressing the problem of landlord-caused condemnation of properties that result in these kinds of evictions, like we saw with Gateway. So I'm here both representing myself, as well as CU Citizens for Peace and Justice and the People's Housing Authority. This is a, these are grassroots groups that have met informally to discuss housing in our community. I think that what we're asked, what we're urging you, what we're asking you to consider is to take up a principle. And we can talk about how that principle can then flow into actual legislation. So the principle is that if the landlord creates a problem, then the landlord should be responsible for solving the problem. That's the principle. So resource guides are great, that doesn't necessarily address that principle. An emergency fund that the city would have, it, it might be one solution of many, it's not, it doesn't address that principle. So here's three things you can consider, specific actions you could take. The first is the relocation assistance. And actually, as Mark Ensland mentioned, this will take, this will involve kind of an immediate disincentive for landlords to do what they did with Gateway Studios, which is to steal the money. They took the money, they were supposed to pay the utility company, they didn't pay the utility company. Where'd that money go? Into the pocket of the landlord. So they took the money and they left. So we want to create a disincentive so people know the rules up front. You can't get away with that in the city of Urbana. So people, as Esther mentioned, people are legally entitled to, in a situation where the landlord causes condemnation, to the prepaid rent, the security deposit, moving expenses, and the difference in the old lease and new lease, given that it's a comparable situation. So I guess the question is, well, shouldn't we just let those individuals sue the landlord and get the money back? And Esther mentioned it takes eight months. It also is the case that in these particular circumstances, especially where people don't have the cash, they're not going to have the cash to hire an attorney either. So the city of Urbana already has a model that it can follow. That is with the human rights ordinance that we have. We don't necessarily wait for an individual to hire a private attorney to sue someone because they won't, the landlord won't rent to them for being black or gay or lesbian or et cetera. The city attorney takes that on, and they sue on behalf of the victim. So similarly, attorney resources, city resources could be used to defend tenants in this situation. And the reason for doing so is because there are social problems that come. There are community-wide problems that come when a whole group of people, in the case of Rantoul, 180, in the case of Champaign, 100, face all of a sudden homelessness practically overnight. There are social ills, and that's why the city should get involved. And that's why we shouldn't leave it up to individuals, case-by-case basis. So I want to respond to, so that's the first idea. And I won't run up the spot to two concerns that have been raised. The first concern is, will this cost the city? Perfectly reasonable question to ask. You're absolutely right to ask that question. It's definitely a concern. So the first question the council should ask the staff is, how many condemnations that have happened, have happened against landlords that were bankrupt? I think you will find in Urbana, not very many. And so in most cases, you will have recouped the costs. Okay? The second is, okay, well, what if, what if they weren't bankrupt? There's certain cases where the landlord is bankrupt and you're chasing someone. Well, first, you have the property that is here, it's bricks and mortar, it's in the city limits, you can put a lien on it. You put a lien on two people I know who had grass growing too long in their, their front yard. They can't sell their property until they pay off that fine. So the city already does that all the time for much, much lesser offenses. Okay? So you can put a lien on the property. The third thing that has not been mentioned in the public conversation, I think it's important to consider, is, okay, there's, the landlord creates a situation of condemnation. Either, one, the landlord pays for relocation and it's game over. The second situation is the landlord doesn't pay for relocation and essentially you force them, you front the money, you force them to pay. In that situation, you could fine them daily until they pay, just like you fine folks for breaking the law all the time in the city of Urbana. Well, the fines are an increment above what you have paid out. So you have additional funds that have come in now that you've fined the landlord. Well, could those monies be used to recoup costs, in the rare cases in Urbana, where you aren't able to recoup the costs because there's bankruptcy? So you have extra funds that you should consider. So that's the might response to, will this cost the city? I think you should ask a lot of questions. I think you should dig deeper. And I think that there is a way to set this up such that it does not ultimately cost the city. The second concern was, will this benefit people who don't need it? I think it's a perfectly reasonable question and concern. So I wouldn't reject the proposal outright just based on that concern, I would ask more questions. So first off, it is their legal right to, to set up things. Second, you could consent any condition you wanted to, because of that language of may, that the city may, you know, according to the staff memo, it sounded like the thought was that we would always do this in every case. I don't think that's the case. I think we might consider what the thresholds are, and let's think about what those thresholds should be. So that's the first thought. I'll be much briefer with the second two. I think that at the very least, okay, at the very least, could you make landlords keep utility payments in escrow, such that they cannot pay, and this, of course, only deals with utility, it doesn't deal with other condemnation, so it's only a piece of the picture. But in the utility case, could you force them to keep the money in escrow? Because it's not their money. It belongs to the utility company. Third idea has to do with notification. According to state law, utility companies must provide a 10-day notice to tenants before shut off. This was violated, in my opinion, in Champaign because of the issue of, are these people tenants or motel residents? But 10 days is not enough, because folks need 30 days, especially if they're living paycheck to paycheck. So couldn't the city require a longer notice, notification period, either from the landlord or from the utility, a 30-day period? These two second suggestions both deal with the utility issue, they do not deal with condemnation issues. I think the majority of cases are going to be condemnation issues, not the utility issue. So I don't think two and three deal with the whole picture. But if you put these three things together, I think you might have a package. So I just want to ask those folks who came here tonight to, who want to be respectful of your time and not speak over and over again the same thing, if you could just stand to show your support for tenant relocation assistance. Okay? Thanks. So I appreciate your time, and I look forward to further discussion as we work together to solve this problem.
Questions for Danielle? Thank you very much. Next up, Randall Cotton, 1912 McDonald Drive, Champaign.
I'll pass.
Thanks, Randy. Libby Tyler, CD.
Back on May 18th, you asked to send this to committee and for staff to begin to investigate some of the issues that were brought forward at that time from the CU Citizens for Peace and Justice and the People's Housing Authority. So we've done some preliminary investigation. Certainly, there's a lot more work that needs to be done. It's a big issue. I don't believe it can be solved in one evening. And, but we've got started. We did start a coordinated effort. We just had one meeting with the staffs of the city of Champaign and have begun corresponding as well with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Village of Rantoul, and with members of the Council of Service Providers to the homeless. What we're interested in doing is developing a unified action plan, because this is a concern that affects not just Champaign, Urbana, but Rantoul and unincorporated properties as well. Doing research, this is not a unique situation. Many communities are experiencing more and more foreclosures. And we are fortunate in that it has been limited locally, but there's some great resource guides out there about developing unified action plans for these situations. So we've tapped into those. Other aspects of the action plan will include a resource guide. We do believe this is important. There is one that exists, but we would like to expand it and update it. We would like to have that resource guide address not just housing, but other basic needs, social services, legal assistance, emergency aid, listings and contacts. And we'd like to work with the CIAA, Central Illinois Apartment Association, to identify resources and vacancies for quick relocations. We have a goal for completing the action plan in fall 2009. A part of this, I think, should be identifying the funding sources that are out there today. And we've begun to do that as well. There's some information in the newspaper that, I spoke with the United Way, and they asked for a clarification, that they do have a safety net fund. And this is not for individuals, but for groups. And they assisted in Champaign through Center for Women in Transition on a grant. The safety net fund totals $15,000. So it's not the $90,000 Lynn Jones asked me to clarify that. But that is a fund that exists and it is something that can help people in need working through agencies. And it's certainly something that people can identify when they contribute to the United Way, that this would be something that you would be interested in, their safety net fund. And hopefully, we as a community can increase that fund as a general response for emergencies such as occurred in Champaign and Rantoul. In the Regional Planning Commission, I spoke with Darlene Kleppel, and this fund is a formula grant that we receive as a county every year. $138,000 was the latest allocation. It has been increasing each year because our needs are increasing, and thankfully, the funding has increased. It started out seven years ago at just $13,000, and now is $138,000 each year. The funding source is Department of Human Services. These are homelessness prevention funds. So that's completely what these are about. They also have funds from FEMA. They're allocated on an emergency basis. You do need to demonstrate a hardship. So you do need to demonstrate a need, and there is some flexibility, but there is a one limitation in that it can only be allocated once every two years. So if you had a family that had, unfortunately, this occur more frequently than that, that could be a concern. But the goal with the RPC is to have a one-stop location, that people can go to the RPC and access these funds, and that they will work with individuals to move those forward. So there's, we have, do have some resources, perhaps not enough, perhaps not ideal, but we hope with this unified action plan, we could inventory them and identify ways to improve them. Second, on the unified action plan would be a joint legal review of the ability of municipalities to assist the tenants in protecting their rights. And it may be that there's elements of this House bill that could be applied locally to further that protection. And we do, we do want to see the property owners held accountable in these situations where that's feasible. So that is something we would also like to work on jointly. Next, just following up from the last meeting, there was a concern that we, a suggestion that we amend our rental registration program to include long-term stay motels. And in the memo, we talk about why it's important to continue to classify those as commercial uses, because the code requirements protect that type of use, and that if you have a, more than a 30-day, that it become a residential use, it would need to be modified to provide for better fire protection and a more suitable affordable housing alternative. And this relates to our zoning ordinance in Urbana. So we would like to continue to pursue our systematic inspections of multifamily housing, which we have in Urbana. And they do have in Rantoul, but not in Champaign currently, not the systematic inspection just by complaint. And we do as well inspect the commercial properties. And we did clarify our properties to make sure that we were not having motels used as residences. Next, in terms of getting early warnings so that we don't have these surprises, we do monitor properties. We have an interdepartmental group on problem properties. Part of this is we review the complaints we're receiving, fire and police calls. We monitor bankruptcy proceedings, payment of sewer and water bills, and we identify, hopefully, in advance when we recognize problem properties. And we work diligently to ensure compliance of our code. And we work diligently to ensure compliance of our codes and also payment of appropriate fees. So we hope we would identify these issues before they came to the head, again, with the utility bill over in Champaign, as an example. On the relocation assistance that's been discussed quite a bit this evening already, the mayor noted that we did start last year with a minimal fund of $2,000, and we would suggest adding to that fund as they become available, perhaps as we did last year, through unexpended consolidated social service grants, or as the mayor suggested, through fines collected under the proposed chronic criminal nuisance property ordinance. In terms of the model proposed in the House Bill 5170, we do feel that there are some downsides to guaranteeing a minimum of the $2,000 plus the return of any deposits to each dislocated tenant, and this becomes an entitlement program that departs from a demonstration of need. I think it would be helpful for the city to look back at the few cases where we've had condemnation and what, in fact, has occurred and what the circumstances were. The one mentioned was of the house roof falling down in the apartment. That was due to contractor error. That was not at all due to the property owner. It was truly an emergency. In our experience, fortunately, when we've had these situations, the property owners have accommodated the tenants immediately in other units that have been available. And there've been a few exceptions, as we've heard from Mr. Omosagi and from Ms. Pat tonight, but I think it would be helpful to look back at the record and see when this has occurred. And certainly, having a local fund based on those situations could help us address those few instances. But if it becomes a situation where each and every tenant is guaranteed that minimum regardless of their circumstance, whether they were able to move into the building next door, whether they had other housing immediately available, we feel would have some unintended consequences, perhaps, with respect to when properties are declared condemned, for example. And we feel, I guess it could be debated whether the city would have that obligation, and certainly, that's something that we would want to look at and not step in front of a foreclosed property, since we, it could be costly if each and every, regardless of need, each and every tenant, and if it was a foreclosed property, many of our apartments are large properties. Two-thirds of the properties in the city are rental. We're talking about two-thirds of our base providing an entitlement, potentially. It's a big undertaking. Mr. Eldridge did want to clarify that if we did undertake to front the costs, that we would need to find those funds. We can't count on them being repaid. So we would need to find somewhere in the city budget where that could be in advance budgeted or to borrow that money, for example. Lastly, I just wanted to talk about prevention because that really is the best response, tracking the problem properties, but also ensuring we have an adequate supply of affordable housing, that we don't see families going into one hotel room that is not, not adequate and not safe for that type of housing. So one effort that's being done regionally is the Housing Needs Study, and this is expected to be completed February of next year. That'll be a great resource to show where we're at in terms of housing needs, and that can then help us as we get into our next five-year consolidated plan where, when we talk about our affordable housing needs. We are making progress in terms of the supply of affordable housing. We just attended the groundbreaking for the long-anticipated Crystal View Townhomes, which will provide affordable housing, also looking to an expansion of Dunbar Court by the Housing Authority, and are working with the owners of the Woodstone Apartments and Scottswood Manor Apartments to upgrade all the units so they can again be brought online as decent, safe, affordable housing, and again, working with our CHODOs, community housing development organizations to increase our supply of affordable housing. And the recommendations from staff would be to continue to work. Again, it will take some time, although we see the urgency, to continue to work with the city of Champaign and other agencies on a coordinated action plan, hopefully to be completed by fall 2009. And again, we will look at the funding source portion of that. Number two, to work together to explore legal remedies, to hold the property owners responsible, and to require sufficient notification, to continue to pursue our commercial and residential inspection programs, as they're now established in Urbana, to ensure the safety of residents, to continue to fund our own tenant relocation assistance program as funds become available through non-expenditure, for example, the consolidated social service funding grants, and potentially through fines that may be accrued under the proposed chronic criminal nuisance property ordinance, with such funds to be administered on an emergency needs basis only. And finally, to continue to study our affordable housing needs and to recommend improvements to our stock of affordable rental housing through the HUD Consolidated Plan and entitlement funds. We do not recommend including hotels and motels in our rental registration program for the reasons stated, and do not recommend adoption of a program such as the put forward in House Bill 5170 due to the substantial potential financial burden, depending on how that's administered, lack of a considered needs basis, and the potential for unintended consequences. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Brendan.
Yeah, thanks, Libby, for the update. I, I think all five action steps are good, especially having a coordinated action plan so that if this happens next week, or next month, or next year, we have a plan on the shelf to be able to go to tenants and help them. I guess the one area that I'm thinking perhaps we can let you work on more and have more conversations about is how to do number four on the plan, the tenant relocation assistance piece. About the need, definitely, our analysis should be needs-based. About the sort of the entitlement, I, I liked what I saw in the state bill text, at least, in that the landlord is entitled to pay tenants, but the city may pay. So we, we have the option of deciding, oh, you know, is this building not in bankruptcy? Okay, we think we could get the funds back so we can jump in and help and front the funds and recapture them. I wanted to ask a bit about the, that bankruptcy question and about the process you would take, just like with, you know, when grass gets too long and we fine someone and then put a lien, you know, eventually, fines lead to liens on a property. Do, do you feel like that process is the same series of steps we could use in this case unless, unless there were bankruptcy? That, that having a fine system and using eventually, you know, trying to collect the fine and putting a lien on the real property would be the mechanism that could work here, too?
I think that's a good question for some more research on what the best mechanisms to recover fines and attach responsibility. I'm sure there's many ways to do that. So we'll work with Legal on that.
Yeah, yeah. That's one of the questions that if you go back and answer, I think it would really help. The, the other two new ideas I heard tonight about the utility payments, being held in escrow, and about having more tenant notification than 10 days, if you could have a discussion with, with Legal and others about them, they're creative, good ideas. I don't know, like, with the utility company, if we can require more than 10 days. I mean, we have a franchise that hardly gives us any power, as we know, with the power company, or with the water company. So I don't even know what's possible, but it would be good to ask those questions and see what might be possible. The last thing I was wondering if you could explain is the RPC. It's really great to hear that there's already $138,000 for this kind of thing, and maybe we don't have to find the cash. Maybe we can work with the RPC and others to have a countywide pool of funds for these situations. The current, can you describe the current way the RPC administers it? If, if a building closes, does the RPC currently give, some people are saying, like, you only might get $100, which, or $200, which doesn't really pay rent. Do you have a sense now of how the RPC administers that $138,000 to help people who are at risk of homelessness?
Well, I did speak with Ms. Kleppel, and I think they do try to be flexible. They're there to help with partial rents. They do not have an income guideline. It's available to anybody in the county. You do need to demonstrate the hardship, or if there's been damages, for example, like losing your deposit, something like that. It's an emergency basis. So it is not a program that's there every month. There is a limitation on the reuse that she mentioned. Let's see, there's, there's information on their website that talks about the process, and I didn't get that downloaded for tonight, but I think that's available right on the, the website for their formula grant on rental assistance. It's, some of the funds are granted through continuum of care. I guess that was the recipient, and so the RPC works for us on this program because we apply for those funds and are part of that continuum, and they do a very good job on administration. She also mentioned that the Salvation Army has funds as well, but they like, again, they like to start with the RPC, and then they can make a referral for you or hook you up with the Salvation Army or with Family Service, which has a First Call for Help program. So I think there are some resources there, and I can certainly bring back more information, or perhaps we could have Ms. Kleppel come and answer questions.
Yeah, we were going to suggest that, that she might come. I want to ask about the fund. Is that accumulating? Or do they use it up every year, or what?
It's an annual allocation and probably has similar restrictions as our annual allocations. It's a formula, based on a formula. It's been increasing, and certain needs been increasing. So I think if we have statistics, hopefully, we'll show a greater need and can access more funds.
Brendan.
And do you know if they administered it in the last cases of Autumn Glen and Gateway Studios? Like, for some reason, I didn't hear of RPC or anyone coming to the rescue of some of these tenants, and maybe it's just that I didn't hear about it and it really did happen, or maybe there is still a disconnect in getting these services and this pool of funding to those people. Do you know whether it worked, you know, and that money got to these people in this last series of situations?
They did assist some people from Gateway Studios. I don't know about Autumn Glen. Also, the Through Seawit, United Way assisted as well. And again, these would be small assistance amounts. It wouldn't be, obviously, if you had the 2,000 per resident and 100 residents, that would be $200,000, which would exceed the annual allocation at the RPC, for example, and certainly, the $15,000 that the United Way has. So I think it is fair that there may be needs that exceed these funds, may be mounting, and which is all the more reason to work together and try to pool our resources and, you know, perhaps even become members of a fund to be administered by United Way or to promote additional funds to be administered by the RPC.
Anything else? I'd like to add just a couple of quick comments. So to me, the regional approach is really important because it allows us to share the burden, whatever's done. I'd like to see us in, put together the strongest possible response short of creating an entitlement program, which I think we can do. I think there are a lot of, a lot of ideas have been demonstrated tonight. I won't go into them. And the, and because of those possible, because the possible city liens and fines and whatever, I think there's a way to pay back some of those regional funds that might be, might be tapped and created. And then finally, I really, you know, if, if we can, as a city, put additional pressure, additional requirements on the utilities with fines and whatever to them for violation, I think we should try to pursue those as well. That's echoing Brendan's last comment. So we have a lot on the agenda tonight. So jumping ahead, thank you very much, Libby. Next up is social service funding, David. And Kelly is here as well. Thank you, everyone, for attending, and I appreciate the patience of all the others that are here. We have lots of people for lots of things.
I've distributed the, a revised version, as we talked about last week, of Take 17, B., subparagraph nine, of this, a version of the, the allocation matrix. The, the basic idea is that's based on some additional information that we got last week and some suggestions from the mayor. And in the, the spreadsheet that I've distributed, the last couple of columns note the difference between the recommendation of last week versus what I'm recommending now. In the, in the discussion that we've, that I've had with, with some of you every now and then offline, one of the, there's something that, that came up that I think is worth, worth noting, which is that, again, we have requests that are about 150% of the amount that we have to allocate, and that presents a, an interesting issue in that what do, what is it that we choose to prioritize? Do we prioritize the organizations which have, that we have funded in the past? Should we try to especially prioritize organizations that are making their first request? Should we not pay any attention to, to history whatsoever? And there's a case that you can make for, for any of these positions. What I'd, what I'd respond is that the, the way that we have allocated this money is essentially a, an average of our opinions, which is a way of saying, each of us has put judgment into a, a statement of what each individual believes the allocation should be, and that as such, the, by basing our allocation essentially on the average of these, then that reflects either our accumulated wisdom or our accumulated lack of same. So with, with that, I think that it's fair to say that having, having been almost all the way through this exercise once, on the assumption that we are in fact almost all the way through this exercise, that for next time around, it probably wouldn't hurt to have a little bit more discussion ahead of time just on these sort of more, more general issues of prioritization and so forth, and that that will maybe better prepare us, certainly better prepare me for the, the next round. Having said that, anything you'd like to add?
I did have an attachment that did list, I believe I sent an email out that had as far as like a CDBG portion that we did prioritization, which could be used as well in the future for, for all of the funds. I don't believe, kind of township, they, they look at, once funding has been allocated, they look at what falls under the regulations, because there's certain regulations and agencies that fit under that. That's, that's how Carol does it.
I'll be the first to admit, David, that my numerals are sometimes hard to read. Even my husband's like, what's that? What's that number? So there are just two where I see that my total didn't add up to the 312, 760. Number 43, instead of being 7,580, should be 8,150. And on number three, instead of 21, 2250, it should just be 21, 23. On, just on my, so that it adds up, because I'm sure that I did, because I double-checked my numbers about 1,000 times, but like I said, my numbers sometimes are a little funny to read. to read. Sometimes my fives look like eights and threes, so it doesn't, it's not your fault.
Well, I, still, I apologize for not getting it right, although I do have some people, I lean over my shoulder every now and then and ask me what language I'm writing in, so...
Well, anyway, so those are my numbers, just...
Brendan.
Yeah. And probably, maybe Heather, your changes don't affect your column, but yeah, because he rounded to the nearest hundred or whatever.
I know, I'm just saying that it, I didn't use, it just shows that I didn't use that full amount.
Right, right.
And not that it changes anything, but just that I know that I had those numbers.
Okay, I think that's a perfectly valid point.
I was wondering, I know Charlie had emailed sometime this week, alternate motion to council members that I received, with the idea, kind of on a different logic, you know, what if we start by continuing to fund the current agencies, and we don't short-change them each before we fund new programs? I guess one suggestion is, it might be helpful to me to kind of hear a straw poll of what people's feelings are in general, about whether they, at this point, want to go the direction that David's put together for us, of working from averages and getting this done, or go the direction that Charlie had suggested, of going from existing organizations? And so a show of hands, or some simple way to just gauge where people are at, would help me in knowing, are we ready to make a motion, or do what?
I saw three hands. Diane's first, then Robert, then Mayor.
I, well, to answer Brendan's question, I would say let's go with David's, and for this year, but a more general comment is, it would be really helpful for next year if we, as a council, maybe talked about some basic guidelines or criteria, or how we're going to approach increasing number of requests. I mean, I think it's only going to get worse in terms of, you know, we have a pie that's so big, and we're going to get more and more requests to cut a piece out of it. And it would be nice to have some guidelines and criteria to work for, especially as being a brand-new person. I had no idea what you were operating under, or what the past history is, other than the numbers on the page. So I think it would be good for us to step back and say, okay, what are the guidelines? How are we going to handle new applications? How do we handle current? Are we going to have a general policy of continuing funding and never reducing any one, or what? I would just, it'd be nice to have some guidance. And consistency, so we can defend these, not defend, but yeah, explain these allocations.
I'm going to jump in and ask Kelly to please put on her calendar for next year, this discussion, you know, in a timely way, like, you know, several weeks before the applications even go out.
Looking at like mid-February, because applications go at the beginning of March.
Yes, please. Robert.
Thank you. I'll make my appeal one more time, and I think he's done an excellent job, on looking at the collective wisdom of this group. But I'll repeat what I said last year, and I think it's something that we need to think about in terms of social service grants. And funding is, that we need to come up with a way of addressing the issue of just dealing with each individual person each time. And I think maybe the solution would be to have agencies that are, that have duplicating services, or similar services, join together, and somehow, their funding, we'd fund them higher than they would normally. And that would draw these groups together, so that they could possibly do a better job with more funding. Because if you have diminishing funds, obviously you want those that can do the most, get the most bang out of the buck, to draw these people together. And I think we could collectively put together a package that might tell them how they could possibly join forces and get the job done. I've been trying to talk about that for three years, but obviously, we haven't heard it. So, I would like to see something like that in the discussions that we have next time.
Robert, would you prefer to start earlier than mid-February, then? Because, you know, that's a discussion that's going to take a little longer, and we probably should start earlier than February 15th, or so.
It won't take me long, because I've been working on it for three years, but maybe for the rest of it, yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good, next week.
Well, next week's council meeting, but, no, I guess, maybe a request of staff, then, to look at the issue and come back in a timely fashion, maybe earlier than mid-February. How's that? Does that summarize it? Okay, so we should plan on this discussion December, January of this coming fiscal year? Okay. Mayor.
Well, one of the issues is how many, what proportion of people being served by these agencies are Urbana residents? And that was something that I thought we have a first obligation. I think that David is correct, that this has to boil down to, like, an individual judgment of every council member, including me in the council, because we don't have any precise way of measuring the relative value of these social services. It's kind of like, what we know of them? Are they good agencies, or not so good? So it is a complicated thing, and I think it's reasonable that we have some discussion of what the standards are, but it really is a judgment call, and we're all going to have a different opinion. So I think to average them is a very good approach.
I'd like to just quickly summarize what I sent an email to folks, because I'm not completely in agreement with where we're headed here. First, I found a typo of my own that messed up one of those averages substantially, and I've sent that correction to David. I don't know how that changes things. It's a substantial typo, and I think it pulled down that particular average a lot. $5,000 on my part, it's quite a mistake. I switched to two for a, I switched to seven for a two. Second, I went to try to understand the large differences in allocations between this year and last, and I put all this in a spreadsheet and ran it through. We have six agencies that didn't reapply this year. Two of those were the Urban League, Christian Health Center, an education program, and a couple of other items. The totals, based on last year's allocation of these programs, was something like almost $45,000. In addition, we allocated some more money. So we had, we had about $56,000 of money that was unallocated compared to previous years. Okay, then I started looking at the different agencies of this, of last year compared to this year's proposed, and I put together a column on all that, highlighted everything in colors for you, and, sort of worked out. And so, we've increased existing programs by $32,000. We decreased other programs by $7,800, and started new programs to the tune of $32,000. That's roughly in what David's proposal is. There were five programs with no change from last year. And, you know, frankly, it's great that we're supporting six new programs, and increasing 19 others, which is what the proposal does. But what really bothers me is that we have money to reallocate from those that didn't reapply, yet we decreased 14 programs by various amounts. These are 14 programs that we've supported in the past, at levels that, you know, pretty much have been, in a lot of ways, constant, or maybe small increases for inflation. No big cuts. And we have a record of supporting those programs, funding's tighter than ever. Why would we decrease our contributions if we really don't have to? Some of these agencies have been asking for, receiving the same amount of money for years and years, and yet we're cutting them in these proposed numbers. It doesn't make sense to me, because we haven't done this in the past, or at least the other eight times that I've done this. I checked with council, and a couple of the council members, but I don't have all of the other council members that I've been able to, trying to track down, to ask them what their recollection is on this. But the two that I have spoken with sort of said, there was some emphasis on trying to maintain the agencies that we already had a commitment to. And I will forward those emails as I get them. You know, to me, it seems like we've changed the rules in the middle of the game without telling anybody. And that's what bothers me. And I think, so I proposed an alternate set of numbers that maintains our program, does some reallocation, it doesn't cut $8,000 of money from existing programs, more or less maintains them at last year's numbers, and also commits monies to the six new programs. And so, I propose that as an alternate to get us to, through this year, to a discussion, which I completely support in time for next year. And probably in the rush of, you know, getting into a budget, before we are, you know, we rush into a budget right after an election, we don't have time to stop and think of it. We essentially have two new members, David and Diane. We asked David to just jump in and take over, with essentially no guidance, which is a lot of burden on David, and my apologies to both of the new council members on that issue. I don't think it was exactly fair to either of them. So, that's my feeling, and that's what I've put forward. Heather?
I guess my feeling is, we don't really have rules, because every four years, there's a potential for a whole new council, a new mayor. So I don't know if we necessarily have rules. I do know that, not last year, but the year before, I don't know if it was Kelly, but we were told that, essentially, here's how we have funded, and I'll give an example of the Center for Women in Transition is a good example. We funded them at this amount, let's try to keep it at that, because this is money that they rely on. Now, I didn't hear that conversation last year, but I do remember when I wrote my numbers, having that thought in the back of my head. So I do know that something like that did come to us. This is where they've been funded before. But, like I said, my feeling is, do we really have rules? Because how can we really have rules if there's a potential for change every four years? So, while clearly, with the exception of Diane and David, that didn't change, you know, we have to, I guess, be careful of what rules we make, because they have to be flexible for change.
One of the things that I think is important for us to consider, and I think the logic, mathematically, is, we all go through the same process. We look at the rate of inflation, we look at the numbers, we crank them out a little bit, and try to adjust for that. We recognize that those that are not being funded, and we try to reallocate. That's a logical thing to go through. One of the things that I think is very important, as far as social service recipients would be, is for, to encourage those recipients to increase their capacities, okay, from relying on that source of funding from that source all the time. And oftentimes, they have alternative sources for funding. And what we would like to do is encourage them, and that's what I'm trying to say to all of you. One of the things that I see is a duplication of services throughout our community, okay? And if that's occurring, one thing that they can do is shed that, I don't know what you want to call it, pride, or whatever, and join with those others, and make their organization a better organization. That's one of the things we could encourage them to do, in a process. Now, defining that process is a whole different ballgame, but it's one way of looking at it that would make sense when you're having diminishing funds, so...
Heather?
One last thought, and that is, David kind of was given this curveball, and it was thrown at him pretty fast, and it's hard to handle fast pitches if you're in the minor leagues. And so, I think, and so, and so, I think we need to give the rookie a break and say, hey, you know, this, he did his best with the numbers that he had, and his first time around, did a pretty good job.
But I guess I'll add that that's why I jumped in with an alternate set that seemed to capture as much as I could of the spirit of what was going on, without deviating much from what I viewed as sort of a, an understanding that we had with these agencies. And so, that's the spirit with which I've offered an alternate version of this spreadsheet. Brendan, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I couldn't quite tell where everybody stood, so I was going to make a motion to send the social service funding allocations item to council with Charlie's set of numbers. And we'll obviously have to see it in writing and make sure the typos are out next Monday. So I don't know if that's where the majority stands, but I'd like to make that motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second? I would second it, but I don't think it's going to go anywhere, so...
I'll make the motion.
Please.
What's David's motion? David's motion, I mean, David's numbers to the council for...
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Diane. Could I get a clarification? There've been a couple of typos pointed out, on Heather's part and my part. My apologies to David. Okay. Mine has a little bit of an effect. Would the council at least entertain, you know, a recalculation based on those typos to get a little bit better, you know, just as close to what you've proposed, but take those into account? Is that doable?
Alex, accept the friendly modification.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, this goes to council. Thank you very much, everybody. Next up is Resolution Adopting Identity Theft Prevention Program. It's from Finance, Ron Eldridge, Resolution 2009-06-22R.
I don't think this will take very long. Just reading from my cover memo briefly, the city's required, under federal rules, to pass these theft identity prevention policies. They're called the red flag rules, because they're, when people try to set up accounts at the city, to steal someone's identity, there's certain red flags that jump out, that it's a fraudulent account, and that's where they came up with the term. We're probably not likely to have this happen to the city. I mean, this is probably more likely for banks, and loan entities, and things like that, but we do meet the definition. We do have accounts for people, and we do hold private, some of their private information in those accounts, and that's why we do meet the definition, so that's why we have to pass this. I am named the program administrator, so I'll be responsible for it, and after passage of this, we will go out and train employees in the city departments that will be affected by these policies.
Questions, Heather, then Robert.
I would just move the adoption of this resolution.
I can second that, I had one quick question.
Okay, Robert?
What have they been doing in the past?
Well, we've just used common sense, this, the second part, which is the personal, protection of personal information, we've always kind of had those rules. We've always questioned people about, you know, locking away information when they leave at night, and not to throw it out in the dumpsters, and those sort of common sense rules. We've always had those, sort of in an informal way, never adopted formally by the council.
And I have a quick question, too. So, does this apply to, you know, computer files, and server files, and all that as well?
Yes, it has.
And we already have, I know, substantial firewall stuff, and sometimes it's possible to get stuff through the city, but, so, I would imagine that this is, like you said, just a formalization of existing policy?
It is. We, yeah, as far as the computerization, we probably, that's probably our strongest area, as you mentioned, for protection, but most of the time that, when there's a lapse, it's some breakdown of a common sense rule, you know, leaving a paper laying there, or throwing something out of the dumpster with someone's social security number on there, driver's license, or that type of thing.
Yeah, and as somebody who works with this kind of stuff at the university level, we purged everything we possibly could at the department level, and pushed it up higher, so that we wouldn't be responsible for it, so... Anyway, yeah, because I believe the state has some hefty fines if you mess up. So is that right? Ron, I don't know, are you familiar with state fines?
I'm not familiar with the fine system. Fortunately, we've not had to encounter that.
The state has some hefty penalties. Okay, there's a motion to send this to council. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This goes to council. Thanks, Ron. Next up is Ordinance Number 2009-06-063, An Ordinance Amending Scheduled J of Section 23, 183 of the Urbana Local Code. Prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, this is Rainbow View and Stoughton Street. Public work scale.
The ordinance you have before you this evening basically restricts parking in two areas within a community. It's based on action taken by the Traffic Commission in their May meeting. The first area is in Rainbow View, from Abercorn to Oglethorpe. The first area is in Rainbow View, from Abercorn to Ogglethorpe. It's on the north side of Savannah Greens Development. It's in that portion of Savannah Greens, which is developed. There's a portion over to Smith Road to the west that, when it develops, the Traffic Commission will look at that area also for the same type of activity. It's for, parking's already restricted on the north side of Rainbow View and that stretch. There are three streets and two alleys that intersect Rainbow View within that reach between Abercorn and Ogglethorpe. There's some issues with making sure cars are parked clear so people can get in and out of those alleys, no streets. So, the Traffic Commission recommended no parking on the south side of Rainbow View and that stretch. The other area is Stoughton, between Lincoln and Gregory. That's immediately west of Lincoln Avenue. That's a narrow street, it's 28-foot wide. Immediately west of Lincoln, we have a church parking lot that exits onto the street. And there was a request to restrict parking in that area. We have looked at and defined the parking, recommendation was to define the parking, not lose any spaces, but to restrict the parking from Lincoln to the west of approximately 120 feet or so west of Lincoln, to clear that driveway and make sure people can see coming out of the church parking lot. And we recommend, Traffic Commission recommend approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion? Heather?
I would move that we send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
It's been moved by Heather, seconded by David. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This goes to council. Thanks. Next up is a discussion of energy grant application. Rod Eldridge, Rod Fletcher. I'm looking at you and saying the wrong name.
Thanks, Charlie, and thanks, council. Pursuant to the memo that was in your packets, the city is eligible to receive $185,200 from the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Funds issued by Department of Energy. We have actually four separate proposals we'd like to discuss with council to get confirmation and/or direction for establishing programs and/or projects to be submitted by the city for the EECBG funding. The first project involves a replacement of all fluorescent lamps with LED lamps here at the city building for an estimated cost of $82,000. We have the lights in the city complex, we have approximately 288 lamps, they're on 24/7, and about 1,120 lamps are on basically 270 days a year, 10 hours a day. And we're proposing to retrofit those with LED lamps. They're available and in use for internal lighting applications. They have extremely long lives, 50,000 hours, do not contain mercury, and use a fraction of electricity that even our energy-efficient T8s and electronic ballasts that we have here currently use. On page three, I put together a small comparison of the costs and potential savings per year. Replacing the 24/7 lamps, we would see a savings of almost $3,000 a year, and over the life of the bulbs, about $16,815. For the rest of the lamps, we would see the savings of about $3,500 a year, and over the life of the LED lamps, about $63,000 over the life of the years. For total savings, about $80,000. These are all on $2,009, by the way. For the first six years, the annual cost savings altogether would equal about $6,500, which we could then set aside and create other opportunities for energy, opportunities in the future through those cost savings, just for the relamp of the LED bulbs. I guess with that, I'll stop and ask if there's any questions on that particular proposal. May I?
Go ahead.
Just a couple of things. We're already working on the 24-hour bulbs not being on that long, you know, putting the motion sensors in. But, we do have, I think, if you recalculate your savings on the LED lamps for the second group, it's really, you've got more savings than what you think right here. I think you had a little arithmetic problem. I think the total energy cost is, instead of 4802, it's 3645. That's a little high. You can see it's only 63 percent, and the other ones are 53 percent savings.
Right.
So, you're doing a little better.
Thank you.
Okay, Rod?
The second proposal is to partner with Ameren's Act on Energy Program for a total cost of $85,000. And the staff has been meeting with representatives of Ameren over the course of the past two weeks, and I have two representatives from the Conservation Services Group that administers the Act on Energy Program. And I'd like to just bring them up, and they can talk about their various programs that they do have.
Thank you for sitting through all this. Please grab a seat, both of you, if you like.
He's pushing me up here. Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Dave Pelton with Conservation Services Group. We do administer the Act on Energy Program for Ameren on the residential side. Act on Energy has residential and commercial, and tonight, we're, I guess, going to talk mostly about the residential side. The program, Act on Energy, has, there are a suite of, or maybe a menu, you could say, of options within the program, and they're all a result of a lot of thought and a lot of calculations on how to get the most energy savings from every dollar spent. And so, as we look at the energy efficiency community block grants across the state and really across the country, and as the City of Urbana looks at the energy efficiency aspects of those block grants, we feel like there are some great complementary things that could go with the Act on Energy Program. For example, one of our programs buys down the cost of an energy audit in a home. If you're going to save energy, first you have to take an inventory of where you stand. A typical energy audit for a homeowner is between $200 and $700, depending on the extent of the audit. The Act on Energy Program buys that down to $25 per person, which has been a very effective tool and makes it affordable for most homeowners to take that first step. So, an auditor goes in, spends an hour and a half in a home, takes inventory of what is there, and has a list of measures that could make that home more energy efficient. While the auditor's there, compact fluorescent light bulbs are installed, low-flow showerheads are installed, so there are some measures done right away. And then, the homeowner is left with a list of other things, insulation, HVAC units, other sort of larger cost-saving measures that could come from that. But then, there's a little bit of a gap. The Act on Energy Program has some incentives for those measures, can buy down the cost of putting insulation into a home, can buy down the cost of HVAC units. But some homeowners still, there's a little bit of a gap for them. They're not ready to put that money out there for a new HVAC unit. This would be a great place for one of these block grants to maybe step in and buy down the cost a little bit more. That's an example. We do have a list, I'll keep my comments relatively brief, but we do have a list of all the measures within the program, and I have some packets here that you can leave with you. But I didn't want to say, go on too long. I wanted to maybe leave some room for questions if there were questions.
Brendan?
Yeah, thanks, David, for being here. This is, this is an exciting option. I want to make sure I understand it all. You said the normal cost of an audit is between $200 and $700. Yeah, that's what I've heard a lot. So, is the funding that is proposed here, the $85,000, used to buy down the cost of audits from that $200 to $700 range down? Or do you already have funding for that from another source, and we're being asked to buy it down from the reduced cost of $25 down to zero?
The second, Ameren is already buying the cost down to $25.
Okay.
And then, assuming that, we haven't found that $25 is a big hurdle. Most homeowners can still, can do $25, but there are some that wouldn't be able to still, and maybe buying that down all the way is a good use as well.
And the kit is, the kit of compact fluorescents and water pipe insulation and low-flow showerheads is also something that's paid for through other funding sources?
That's right. That's through the Ameren Act on Energy Program as well.
Okay, great. And here's a funny question you probably get a lot. What is your unit, the Conservation Services Group's connection to the rest of Ameren in terms of your sort of business motivators? When you go in and do an audit, you know, obviously, we want you to get people's energy use down as much as possible. But Ameren, I mean, the rest of Ameren is in the business of selling as much power as possible. So, how is your group positioned within Ameren? And how do we know that when you show up and do energy audits, you're really trying to get power use as low as you can?
That's a good question. CSG, Conservation Services Group, their whole mission is reducing energy. It's a 501(c)(3) organization that responded to Ameren's RFP, essentially. Because CSG is a national expert in reducing energy use, we were a logical choice for Ameren to come in and do these, implement these programs. We don't, we don't really gain from one way or the other, other than doing a good job with helping people reduce energy.
Okay.
And, by the way, Ameren has state legislation requiring them to meet certain goals, and that's also our burden as well, is to meet those goals.
Great, okay. I mean, someday, we want decoupling, you know, so that Ameren has the incentive to sell us all less power.
Sure.
You know, but short of decoupling, which other states do successfully, we don't have decoupling in Illinois. That makes a lot of sense, that you're a 501(c)(3), and of course, Ameren's required. Your motivation will be in the right place, so, thank you.
Rod, did you want to add anything? Diane?
I was just curious, is this Act on Energy Program, do we pay a fee for this in our power bill, or is that just?
There is a, there is a fee. It was, and this was, this is a question that's a little bit probably up the Ameren chain for me, but there is, there is a fee associated with that on the bills.
Part of our discussion was that a small portion of every bill can be put towards this program.
Mayor?
It's kind of ironic that we're trying to get people to reduce their power use, which would presumably lower their bill, but they're raising the rates, so who knows if anybody's going to save anything? I mean, they're going to save on energy, but they may not save on money.
Yeah, the best we can do is help them save as much energy as possible. Absolutely.
Yeah, David, what if a person has done, you know, a number of things, you know, they already have compact fluorescent bulbs, and I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of people already do. They've got the low-flow showerheads and aerators. What else do you offer? I mean, I guess you've got this packet here that you're going to show us, but...
Yeah, and we can leave those with you, but that's where the other measures would come in, where if they want to add more insulation. I mean, there are sort of very simple, immediate things like changing out light bulbs and showerheads, that a lot of people do that on their own. Part of the program is offsetting the cost of those bulbs at the store. Ameren and the Act on Energy, when you go to a box store or to a local hardware store and you buy those, part of the program is reducing the cost at the store. So, people who do it on their own still have something. But then, what happens with the big-ticket items? Changing out HVAC, changing out insulation, that's, there are incentives and rebates associated with that as well. The way that we operate, the way we implement that is, we would work with a local contractor, local HVAC contractor here in the Urbana area, to then do that work. And we would simply present the homeowner with a list of local contractors or program allies, as we call them. And then, that contractor can access the rebates and the incentives on the equipment.
Okay. Further questions? I guess the packets would be nice to have.
Yeah. Do you want those now, or do you want those afterwards?
Sure, no, now's fine, yeah.
This is Larry Brown with our office also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rod?
We certainly have some details, well, not just details, but we have a lot of work yet to work out on exactly what will work and what we end up with here. But in general, we're looking at a buy-down of something along the order of $25 per household, which would enable us to serve about 3,000 households. And I think that would, that's almost 50% of our single-family through fourplex units, so that would be a great opportunity for us to make and enable those energy savings for that portion of the populace at this point in time. Any further questions on that particular item? The next item, Community Development, is requesting acquisition of a, equipment to perform energy audits in the amount of $4,000. Actually, they wish to purchase a blower door unit that would actually determine the various leaks that a home may have, and as I understand it, that would be operated out of, out of John Schneider's office. And it would be a nice addition because it would also be eligible for people who are beyond the low-income weatherization program that the Regional Plant Commission will be making available, too, as a part of these funds. John, do you have anything to add?
I think that the blower door is probably a part of what the energy audit includes. Is that correct? Generally?
It would be like an additional piece of...
Okay. One of the things, I've had some experience with the blower door, and one of the things that, we hear a lot about the county weatherization program, but it only applies to households whose incomes are at or below 60% of the area median. So, that means that households who are between 60 and even at the area median don't get that assistance or are ineligible for that assistance. And this, what we could do is, we could make the blower door available. We could train neighbors, make it a neighborhood-type program, and people who are willing to go to other people's houses and help them use this instrument. And what it does is, it identifies, when you turn the blower door on, you can walk through the house and tell where air leakage is occurring. And so, it identifies areas where people can improve the tightness around windows, around doors, weather stripping, things of that nature. And it actually gives a printout of how much, before and after, how much air leakage there is. And it's, I thought it was a minimal cost or a minimal investment to make it available citywide to anybody that wanted to use it to improve their house in their, you know, in their own time period, and then you could quantify it over like a period of however long it takes them to do it, maybe a year. Because I'm sure that we have to report this, as with any other kind of federal program, you have to report results. So, I was, you know, trying to fit in with what kind of reporting requirements you would need.
Mayor?
Well, yeah, my question would be, doesn't that duplicate what the energy audit from the previous gentleman are doing?
The $25 audit actually does not include a blower door test because it's more of a, it's sort of a half-day process to go through all that. It's a much more extensive...
So, we should kind of coordinate the two then, right?
Yes. And a logical way to do that would be to work with the local ally or contractor and have that maybe be a loaner piece of equipment for a local contractor who might otherwise have to spend $2,000 or $3,000 on that equipment themselves.
Brendan, then Diane.
Yeah, Rod and John, I like the blower door idea, and I support it, too. It does seem a little bit like it's an incomplete solution, and we'll need more to make sure it's utilized well. I know, I mean, it takes some expertise to use the blower door.
I know, I mean, it takes some expertise to use the blower door, so it would be hard, I can't imagine thousands of residents coming out to check it out and use it on their own without some expertise. And I've also seen people use it in conjunction with the thermal camera, so that you can watch through the thermal infrared camera where the leakage is, and target those spots for insulation and sealing and things. So, so we should get the door. There isn't one in the community that I know of that, you know, that even contractors or homeowners can borrow and use, so I think it's a good first step. But I encourage you to figure out, then, once we've got it, how to connect it to the right people, to notify people, to make sure people are aware when they do like the Act on Energy audit, that this is the next step that they could take with the help of someone who's trained in using the door. So that's, so I hope if we figure out how to make it a complete solution.
Diane?
Yeah, that was basically my question, is who's going to use it, and how much training does it take, and will it be staff going out? And I guess those are all questions.
Well, it's starting to sound like it's beginning to become a coordinated effort. My thought is, when I was trained 20 years ago on using the blower door, and of course, since then, I've forgotten how to use it, and I'm sure it's changed a lot in that period of time, we went through the Small Homes Council, and I'm, one of, one of my ideas of this program, because we have such good cohesive neighborhood efforts, would be to try to identify people in the neighborhood who are willing to volunteer their time to learn how to do this and train others, and maybe go to their house, and the more volunteers we have, you know, the more assistance we would have.
Mayor?
Wouldn't it be possible just to have the person who does the energy audit use it? Tie them both together?
I would think so.
Because we're going to, if we're going to pay for the energy audit, why don't we just...
Yeah, but he said it was a four-hour process, so that's probably a lot longer than they have per house.
Four hours for the blower door?
Yeah.
Okay, so your energy auditors don't want to use this extra thing? Because it'll slow them down?
Mr. Baurson, sorry, is right, that it's, it actually is, it really does take a little more expertise, and you really would want a trained professional to, to execute that piece of it. And it's especially, there's a little more to consider, especially if there's natural gas in the home, and you're dealing with air flows and flues that are supposed to flow a certain way, so it's a little bit more than just, I mean, there is, there is some professional training that goes along with it. But it would be probably appropriate for this, for these block grants to be used for some training. I mean, that, that could be a piece of it as well, for some local, local training.
So it'd probably be more than the $4,000 we had in the memo.
Okay, well, an idea that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more, but I see general consensus that we keep, keep developing it. Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. And Rod, you want to keep going?
Yes. The last item I have here to discuss is replacement of the roof for the Community Development Department at a cost of $30,000. The existing roof needs to be replaced in the next five years. This roof has virtually little to no insulation, has a black rubber membrane roof. We're proposing to increase the R value from R5 up to R21, and put on a white TPO rubberized material, membrane material on top of the insulation to reduce our heating and cooling load. We have not yet exactly determined the amount of savings for that. We're working towards that. And unfortunately, it does not have the structural system to support a vegetative green roof.
On the other hand, I will point out the fire department side does.
That's correct.
That's a different matter, you know, but, so, so just keep that in mind. And, and I guess I would like to ask an alternative here. I think the, the white membrane is a really good idea. That's what the library is using, and the library's seen substantial savings, and I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with with the new HVAC sensors as well. It'll be a few months before we can figure that out. But, you know, I didn't have to mention LED night, somebody else, Rod conveniently mentioned it for me. I told you it was coming. But I have, one of my favorite other topics is, of course, a solar roof, a photovoltaic roof. You know, is an alternative here, a metal roof with, with, with the roll-on PV that's out there as an alternative to the white roof. So, I support the idea of a white roof, but I would like to know about a photovoltaic roof as an alternative.
With the radiational values?
Yes.
And the radiational values, like, is similar to the materials they use on, on the Hubble Telescope?
That I could not answer at this point in time.
Okay.
But, but we're certainly looking, what we're looking to do is, is increase our, our attic insulation and our reflectivity off of our roof, which will reduce our, certainly our cooling load and also our heating load.
You might consider that, because one of the considerations for now is putting those barriers in to absorb that radiation, and it also improves the cooling and heating.
Okay, thank you.
Brendan?
I had one more that I wanted to just ask about, Rod. There was at the Sustainability Commission, the discussion of the climate study piece of Urbana contributing to some regional effort to get a local version of the climate study done by like Don Moibels, if I'm pronouncing his name right. And I heard that, by talking to Maria, that she had talked about it, and you mayor had talked about it on the trip to Seoul, when Don was there, too, and that one of the ideas was, gee, can the university fund this thing for us, which would be great? I wondered, since we do have $10,000 sort of extra in here, whether it makes sense to save any of the funds for funding the climate study if we can't get the UVA to pay for it, and whether that would be an allowed use of these grant funds?
Well, first of all, actually, we're $16,000 over our $185, assuming we can get a $16,000 grant from DCEO for our LED project. We, there's no $10,000 loose here. I guess, I, I don't know at this particular point in time whether there are other funds. I know there are other grant funding opportunities. I've attended several different workshops last week. Cities are scrambling to try to get their applications in in the next two weeks.
Yeah.
And, and I think we may have, from all the indications I have seen and heard in talking to others, is there are going to be a lot of grant monies available from different sources, different times. And I guess at this point in time, these are all that we're really prepared to submit an application for. Others, I think there are going to be future opportunities for us to fund such projects as you're talking about, but, but as a part of this package, I don't know that we're prepared to do that at this point in time.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
Okay, so we'll see a final version or something, or just going to proceed?
We'd just like to proceed.
Okay. Do you need any motion from us?
Well, actually, you have a, a budget ordinance attached that takes into account the actual receipts. I mean, we're destined to receive the $185,200. So we will not receive that until, we're probably three to five months out, until we actually receive the monies, however.
So we don't need to send this to council yet? Or we should, we do?
We could go ahead and work out.
Okay, well, this is discussion here, so there's no ordinance number or anything.
Yeah, but there's a recommendation. A recommendation.
Okay.
Can I be recommended?
A motion, then. Heather?
I would, under recommendations, it says that staff recommends that all four proposals be pursued, and that a separate application be made to the Department of Energy for the LED city building light conversion. In the grand amount of $16,000, all four proposals total approximately $185,000. It is also recommended that an ordinance revising the annual budget, energy efficiency, and conservation block grant be approved, so I would move staff's recommendation.
Sending it to council.
Sending it to council.
It's been moved by Heather, signed by Brendan. All those, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Thank you much, Rod.
Thank you.
We'll see you next week. And I believe Mr. Patel and his wife are in the audience and patiently waited for this. We have ordinance number 2009-06061 and 064, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement at 108 West University Avenue, and an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. Go ahead.
In the interest of time, I will try to be brief. You have before you a redevelopment agreement with Baku Patel, a partner with the law firm of Doyle, Lehman, and Patel. Mr. Patel and his firm is interested in developing an approximately 3,000-square-foot professional office building to house the firm's Champaign County offices. The main, the main component of the agreement is a 50% annual TIF 2 rebate on incremental property taxes for 10 years, up to a maximum of $75,000. In addition to that, the city is committing $45,000 in TIF money for public improvements in the right-of-way. That includes the closure of curb cuts on University Avenue and the reconstruction of sidewalks. The redevelopment agreement is consistent with the city's planning, planning framework for the area, and it will promote reinvestment in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of both the agreement and budget amendment ordinance to make this project possible.
Discussion. Heather, you're on a roll. Go ahead.
Send this to council. Can we take them in a nominal fashion?
Yes.
Send both these to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Heather, signed by Diane. Yes.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing then all those in favor?
Agreed.
Opposed? This goes to council. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Last up, and I lost my agenda. Susan's gotten so tired of waiting for us, so she had to take a break and go stand in the hallway here. Susan, sorry. Yes, you're finally up.
I was doing my thing.
I know, I know, good, I know. I tried to stall as long as I could.
Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, I would love to have Amarin out at the Sweet Corn Festival, and it's just finding the right person.
Okay, well, this is ordinance number 2009-06062, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of agreement for promotion and marketing services with the Urbana Business Association fiscal year 2009, 2010. Susan Tolson.
Hi.
Tom?
Good evening, everybody. How is everyone doing? Okay, good deal. You, I, if you had an opportunity to go through the packet, look at the work plan, there are a couple of things I do want to just bring up really briefly. I wanted to talk about the SPY maps that the UVA kind of partnered with the city and a lot of other organizations to have this really creative, interactive map laid down to all the hotels, so it'll make our tourists and, and people at the University of Illinois find areas, the hot business districts in the city of Urbana, downtown, Granite Center District, and also Philo Road. Businesses are included as well. I just spoke with them. They will be out on Friday, and they'll have a sample map. Tom, I know you're somebody that they want to connect with to make sure we can just have eyes reviewing it. Okay, so an update on that. Second Saturday. Again, I think one of the things that the UVA is doing well in this past year is just trying to listen and hear and partner with our businesses, and try to figure out ways that we can capitalize on things on a really quick way. Second Saturday is one of those events. You know, we know we have tremendous foot traffic with Market at the Square. What do we do to take advantage of that? Bring them to Lincoln Square and then on to the streets of downtown Urbana. And that's where Second Saturday has come up. At this point, we have over 30 vendors. Was excited to talk to Wade Franklin at Lincoln Square Village, and he secured about 16 different vendors for inside Lincoln Square as well. We've got two entertainers that will be on the streets this upcoming Saturday, and I have the, you know, we were fortunate to have a lot of local media that jump aboard and, and try to help promote things in the community, so you should be seeing some things in U.S. Gazette, WCIA as well. And I have information here, so if you guys don't mind, I'll, I'll leave it back there, so you can help me promote it, would be great. Okay, Urbana Sweet Corn Festival. Just wanted to show you all the official logo, you know, what makes the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival...
That's, that would be a much better version of the clock tower if you could actually make it happen.
Well, you know, Barb Isaki, you know, and, and she's sitting on our committee, because they're going to dedicate the clock tower 9:00 a.m. on August 29th at the Sweet Corn Festival. And, you know, I just think it's a nice whimsical way, is what makes the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival Urbana, and, and not, as I heard someone said, the Aruba Sweet Corn Festival. So that is something right here that I wanted to show to everyone. We do have a couple of new big sponsors that are coming aboard and taking advantage of this amazing community event. University of Illinois Employees Credit Union will be sponsoring the kids' area, which will be moving, because of the partnership with the County Plaza, and Joe Petrie was very gracious to allow us to use that space to program all the kids' things, all the kids' inflatables and activities. So it'll be good energy in the heart of the festival. And just this afternoon, I've been, just couldn't wait to share this, but I can officially share it, because Chancellor Herman has signed off, and the University of Illinois for Public Engagement are, they're about to wrap their arms around the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival. And with the help of Scott Schwartz at SUSA Archives, we're going to have the Broadway stage on Saturday from 11 until 7, 8 p.m. Will be highly programmed by all the different musical opportunities and music to tie the community together during the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival. And the vision is one community together. You know, this festival happens to be the, you know, the unofficial welcome back to the students of the University of Illinois. And one thing I'm excited about with partnering with the University of Illinois for Public Engagement, excuse me, I, we always get a good showing of students, but I think this year, we're going to get an outstanding showing. So I'm looking forward to seeing all of you present there as well. And seeing Rod here reminded me that last year, Courtney Rushforth from his department came aboard to really help green the festival. And this year, I think we'll see even a bigger effort with partnering with the University of Illinois, utilizing some of their opportunities. It looks like CU Bike Coalition having you all out. Help, help. Thank you. Pardon me that the evening is wearing. Can't even imagine how you guys do this, I'm impressed. But it looks like South Broadway, we're going to have so much programming that will be of sustainable nature, it's going to have its own, you know, green alley. And I think that is about all. Is there any questions? Yes, Charlie?
Wayfinding signs for Second Saturday. Will people know that, you know, that there's something going on? If they're at the market, how will they know that there's something going on inside Lincoln Square and, and on Main Street?
That's a great question.
Besides those of us who make the rounds anyway, but, yeah.
Balloons. You will see colorful balloons, but that's a great question, you know, leading from Lincoln Square on to downtown, and, and the balloons look for the colorful balloons. We may be trying something creative with some music. We do have some music entertainment, and we're working with, how do you logistically do that? Can we do a Pied Piper? So we're going to try some things, they may work, they may not. Lisa Brawls with Market at the Square has been very generous in, in allowing some cross-promotion as well. So we're going to have some materials there, she's going to have it on some of her, she has a, just a blackboard that, thank you, sandwich board, that she's going to post some of that information. So, but Charlie, come on out this week, and if you see a pickup for the next one, share it with me, and we'll implement.
Oh, well, you know I make the rounds of my favorite places every Saturday, so...
I know, I've seen you on the streets, it's good to have you out.
Diane?
Hi, Diane.
Hi. When I saw the SPY map a couple months ago, I was very excited about it, I think it's a great idea, and I'm glad you've got Philo Road businesses in there. Are you going to distribute that to every UVA student and their parents, or what's the, what's the plan?
Well, you know, that's the challenge, you know, how do you, we know we're going to have about 30,000. We are partnering with the CBB, so we know all the hotels are going to have the laydowns, along with the CBB has the, their center at Marketplace. along with the CBB has the, their center at Marketplace. We know that's going to happen. We do partner with the city to put them in the welcome back. You know, how else do we get that out? You know, we want to make sure, they're not going to do anybody any good sitting in a box. So we're looking for as many distribution points and that hence is, is coming with the partnership.
Diane, I'll sign you up for a spot on the streets on move-in day, so. Heather?
Have you guys looked into a joint effort with the MTD and putting those at their stops? You know, where they pick up the, where they pickups, people riding the bus, having those in the, well, I don't even know the proper name for them. Yeah. The, but you know, what I'm talking about.
The shelters.
Yeah, the shelters.
No, I have not. I mean, that's a very good pickup. Now, it's the CU MTD.
Yeah. I just thought.
Yeah, sometimes you can even get, sometimes you can get them to carry some on the buses themselves, because we got them to do bike maps for a while. They, they helped distribute the bike maps on the bus. So maybe during New Student Week, for example, you know, maybe you can get some on the buses that week for, to get it into the hands of the students.
That's excellent. All right, think tank. It's not too late for you all. I'm sorry, Robert. Actually, that's not a bad idea. That is a good idea and that's something Jan Kajowski and I are talking about is how to take advantage of those billboards. That is an interesting, come find, you know, get your Urbana local map. Well, there, I have a copy here if you haven't already seen it. I'll leave it out so you can look at it. It's, it's, they're, you know, they're charming, they're whimsical and it's a, it's a good thing for people from out of the area on how to find spots in Urbana from Willard and also from the highways as well.
Mayor?
Well, I just want to thank you for doing such a great job. And I wonder, at the Sweet Corn Festival, are you going to have somebody from Ameren or something so we can help sign up people for energy audits? And maybe even have the blower door? I don't know if it would fit or not, but you know.
I think that's a great idea and you know, if you don't mind, I'll share that with him in the morning when we come down town.
Yeah, because if you're going to have like a green theme, then that might be one way to get people interested.
Yeah, this is such a great community event that we need to look at it as an umbrella and partner with as many organizations as possible.
Well, I heard some incredible numbers about what Decatur brings for their festival and we're, we're nowhere near those numbers. It's an order of magnitude more than we bring, so.
That's right.
Anyway, I think, Heather, did you have your hand up? Oh, okay. Tom has some additional stuff he wants to add.
Well, I, I do have a brief staff report on the UVA contract, but before I launch into that, I just wanted to mention that the student welcome effort is changing this year. Libby Tyler and Lisa Brawls are working with the university administration to figure out exactly how that's going to work, but it will likely not include CD staff and council members handing out packets on move-in day. We're trying to figure out how to more effectively reach incoming students and returning students, but it will likely not include being out on the street handing out packets. I do know that the, the fire department, my understanding is the fire department has literature and it's in the contract that they can be out there handing out literature, so it's my, Libby has an update.
We'll, we'll bring an update. It is, we're going to be coordinating more with the university and the city of Champaign this year because we're working in advance. So it's an effort called the Campus Community Connection. It's also with the office that's going to be sponsoring Sweet Corn, which is, yeah, which is great. So one idea that we have is to work with the university to have door hangers on the campus apartments with the city's living in Urbana information along with some information from the university. This will be distributed by university students on pretty much the day when students arrive. So it'll be a coordinated effort. I think last year we had trouble getting information to all the students because it wasn't in the dorm room when they arrived and the move-in was over several days. Then the days we were out there, the day we were out there, it rained. So it was hit, hit or miss. So we think by working with the university, we'll be able to convey a more uniform message and get more of a hundred percent. Want to be on the quad. We want to do a lot of things to reach out, but working with the university housing and the chancellor's office for community engagement, hopefully we'll be a little more organized this year.
Let me, one question there. I know that the city of Champaign puts door hangers on private apartments somehow about living in the city of Champaign. I think I got you one of those last year or a couple of years ago. Would that happen too?
That, that was what happened last year, coordination between Champaign and the campus. So Urbana will be part of that effort this year, but we'll have our own materials. And so we're just getting those materials.
And actually, let me just add to that, that a lot of those materials also make great welcome packets for new people that move to the community. And as you know, I put together my own little packets and hand them out. So, so again, that's another thing if we can also think in terms of new residents, because we get a lot of new residents that move in, new faculty, new staff, new business people, the whole bit. And having, you know, letting, having council members with a few copies of those to hand out is always useful.
Okay, thank you.
So, Tom, take it away.
Okay, briefly, you have before you the annual contract with the Urbana Business Association. This is a contract that we've entered into for several years for marketing promotional and special event activities that the UVA does. The major change in the contract for this year is there's an additional $20,000 in TIF I funds to support activities consistent with National Main Street and Illinois Main Street programs. Additional changes include reallocation of some resources from more heavily utilized items from less heavily utilized items that were requested by UVA representatives. The contract also formalizes UVA's commitment to the public arts program through their business backs the arts program. The total city financial commitment to the UVA per this agreement is $95,000. Approximately $52,000 of that is coming from the general fund and approximately $43,000 of that will come from TIF I. The UVA provides valuable services to the businesses and the citizens of Urbana and staff recommends approval of this ordinance and agreement.
Diane?
I move approval of the ordinance approving and authorizing the execution. I move, we send it to council.
It's been moved by Diane, seconded by Heather. Further questions of staff? Susan, others? Brendan?
It's very late, so I just want to briefly say, I think we all, despite, it's late, so we're tired. We all love the things the UVA is doing. I definitely feel there's great energy and a great business climate. I appreciate the attention on downtown and on our businesses at Philo Road and elsewhere. So I totally support this and love what we're doing.
Well, I appreciate that and I, I'll go back in saying it's a team effort. I think everybody's doing their part and businesses and, you know, look, the proof is in the pudding, things are starting to happen. So thanks for your support, guys. Really appreciate it.
If I could add too, that, you know, out of this has grown relationships with subsections of the business community, the Cranet Entertainment District, Philo Road is trying to follow suit, things like that. So the UVA is, you know, that, that's been a close working relationship. And so some ideas that were floated out there four or five years ago by, by Michael Ross and Ian Goldberg and others with the Cranet Entertainment District have come into play. We've got a person who has taken it by the horns and really worked on it, Lea Petit from Blues Barbecue has really worked hard on, on that. And now there's a relationship between the Cranet Entertainment District and the UVA working hand in hand. Again, you know, this goes back to the issue of, you know, using, combining resources to get more bang for your buck. And so it really shows that. So thank you, Susan. Diane had something?
One more thing, I wanted to tell you how much I really like that top 10 little newsletter that you send out. It's electronic, colorful, really full of fun things for people to do and it's in a format that's really easy to forward on to our neighborhood association list. And I inherited Lynn Barnes constituent list and I can send it off to them and it's just a great format.
I, I forward it to the WUNA group every week.
Nicely done. Keep sending them.
I don't know, we need to find out if Dennis is forwarding it to HUNA and, and is anybody forwarding it to UCAP? Do you forward it to the UCAP folks at all or? Those that have computers, yeah. So, you know, it's really taking advantage of electronics. There's even a downtown, is there a downtown neighborhood group or not? They claim to exist, I don't know. So I don't know if they have a mailing list too, but.
Well, I appreciate all the support, but I really do welcome any pickups. I think that was an excellent one about reaching out to CU MTD to distribute these maps and so I welcome that feedback because when we hear that, you know, we're ready to rock and roll on that and, and all of us doing our parts and, and staying positive and energetic and look what's happening. We're having a good time in Urbana.
Just let me know if you need bike maps. We still have 7,000 left.
Yes.
Are there any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor sending this to council? Opposed? It's off to council. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, staff.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Anything else? Seeing no further business, we are adjourned.